I will call the Sunset Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners Board Policy Committee meeting to order. Are we doing a motion?
Alright.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. And to note that that clock is an hour off, it is actually ten, ten ten, and it is ten ten, ten ten, we're getting started today. Alright, um roll call, I think that's pretty nicely done.
Okay, I have that.
Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, no. And we have a rule public here in the face, so we will move on to that. And we will do the approval of the minutes of our past meetings for January sixteenth and February sixth. And if we get a motion.
I move to approve January sixteenth twenty twenty four and February sixth twenty twenty four minutes as presented.
Okay, okay, any discussion? Thanks for such good minutes, thank you, it's so great.
It's agreeable, it's it's the record of what we looked at and what we have changed and we put in the itemized discussion would be five or six more pages.
Alright, and we will start looking at our last of our policies, we hope. So we'll just go through them as they're in our little packets here, and it looks like B three oh seven is first.
And of course, I do want to apologize again for the differences in the corrective structure. These are lost, some of these integers, you know, and I can't get them out, so. I did, so I did put a, just a reminder that the ones that are in red would be added, those words. And then the lines through, of course, with the yellow are the ones, words that would be eliminated.
Okay. Alright. So, and this one we have talked about and we before, and we did go over it, and we were waiting for a little bit of input as far as whether the board can remove a board member, uh elected board member, and we have set as well that that is not possible. So, do we want to read them out loud or do you want to read them out?
Can we just, because I, you know what, I I had, I didn't have my computer and I didn't read these ahead of time, so, I don't know.
Okay.
Is it okay we read them out?
Oh yeah, oh absolutely. You want to read them?
Sure, I will.
Okay, you start this one and we'll take turns.
That will help me digest it.
Okay.
A board member who is unable to attend a scheduled board meeting must notify the board chair in advance of the meeting. Two, a board member may request from the board commissioners an excused absence from a regular board meeting. The determination of the request, excused or not excused, will be a part of the regular board minutes. Excused absences shall include any reason deemed acceptable to the board of commissioners. Three, if a commissioner fails to attend four consecutive regular board meetings within a one-year period without an excuse or otherwise fails to perform any of the duties as a commissioner, the board chair and the chairs at the chair's discretion may take the following options. A, meet with the member and discuss attendance or other issues concerning board commission duties. B, the member who has missed four meetings without excuse within a twelve-month period will be notified with a written notice signed by the board. C, the notice will contain the time and place of the next scheduled board of commissioners meeting, at which time the commissioner's attendance will be discussed. D, the notice will contain a request for the individual to attend the meeting or submit in writing an explanation of the commissioner's lack of attendance. E, at the board of commissioners meeting scheduled for consideration of this matter, the commission shall discuss the attendance matter, considering options including making other changes, date, time, and location that would allow the commissioner, missing meetings, easier access to meetings. One, meeting with the board chair. Two, written notice. Three, ask for consideration from SDAO. F, the board may remove any board officer from office for billiards, perform the duties thereof, after giving the officer reasonable notice and opportunity to be heard.
That's not supposed to be in there.
I don't think we're, because we don't have that.
We don't have that power, so F needs to come out.
No, no, sorry, that was, F slipped, sorry.
Okay, so F comes out.
And I'm just wondering, you know, it's sort of like, E. So, in essence, the the process is, you know, first, I mean, if any one of these could solve the problem or something, I guess we're thinking.
I had lived on this.
A, you know, meet meet with the member, maybe that will solve it. B, member who's missed, uh will be notified with a written notice. But what what does the written notice mean? I mean, what kind of teeth does that have? Nothing.
No, but we can, um, we can write a notice, we can, um. See, I, when Mary and I was discussing this, we didn't have A in our old policy. Um, and I kind of thought, well, why don't we kind of make it like
Yeah, that's a good one.
A verbal, like if you're in trouble at your work, you get a verbal, then you get a written. Our old policy did have the written one in there, so you would write to them and let them know. I think, um.
I think it needs to have some, it needs to say what's going to be in that notice, a big notice.
Well, and I think, and I think if you look into C, that it will contain the time and place of the next scheduled commit commissioners meeting.
Well, maybe that should be a part of B. Maybe it shouldn't be, it's only, it shouldn't be C.
C. Maybe B and C should be combined.
The notice will contain the time and place of the next scheduled board of commissioners meeting, at which time the commissioner's attendance will be discussed. The notice will contain a request for the individual to attend the meeting or submit, yeah. Okay, I can combine those, okay.
And there's also, you have, um, uh, four. One section has four consecutive meetings, and the other just has four meetings during the year. So B has, uh, four meetings within the year, and then somewhere.
Number three has four consecutive regular board meetings.
Right, yeah, yeah, so it should be, and we were, we were at three or four, remember the thing that we were looking at was three or four, but I figured that. I I just put four, because it it can't be three or four. It's got to be three or four, and it seems like.
Are they consecutive or not?
Yeah, that's that's the question, it has to be consecutive. You have two different things, one, um, three.
No, I I understand what you're saying, when we were talking, when she and I were reviewing the, uh, these before, before this meeting, one somewhere it said three or four consecutive meetings. Me. And I changed it to four.
That's good.
So if you would like it three.
No.
Okay, so, so I'll correct this, the member who has missed four consecutive meetings.
I don't like consecutive though.
Oh, okay.
Four is a lot of meetings.
Okay. Alright, so.
Well, but then when do you start the clock? For four consecutive meetings, a calendar year, January, so let's say it's, let's say it's July, and they've missed four meetings so far that year.
Yeah, because they could come in at any time, like somebody just did.
Yeah.
So does the clock start, start ticking at their first meeting?
Well, that's the question, that's all I'm saying is, if all this stuff is got to be defined or else we're going to still be scratching our heads. I don't care, I I say, you know, we need to have something. I I I'm totally for having something that's uh not wishy-washy, you know, that's definitive. You know, four consecutive, it's still a problem when somebody, I mean, four consecutive is terrible, but even, but even, let's just say that, you know, you've already had four unexcused. Well, see now, there's, there's, there's issues, you know, there's issues with excused and unexcused, that's one thing. And then there's how many, how many meetings you've missed.
This says the member who has missed four meetings without excuse within a twelve-month period will be notified with a written notice, so does the first miss start the year?
You could do two ways, one, people who are elected in July in the fiscal year. And then for the people who are appointed, uh, that's what you have to decide.
Maybe just keep it the same too.
How about after ten, isn't it? Or, or.
How about the digital starts it?
Go ahead. Well, if if we just did it from fiscal year, so let's say Paul was appointed in December, November.
Yes.
Okay, he's got, he could miss four meetings between December and July first. Then he'd get talked to, but if he only missed two, okay, that's fine, July first starts over for everybody. It's clean.
Yeah, I I'm all for clean, let's just agree on something and stick with it.
Do we have a law here? Yeah. So, it doesn't matter if, doesn't matter when you're appointed. You've got four times to be, you can be gone unex- or unexcused by July first and you're going to get talked to, or, yeah. And then July first, it starts over for everybody. That way, it's it's kind of like what we're doing with the evaluation public, and we'll talk about this at the meeting. We're doing like a six-month review with Craig so that we can get him on board, that we're doing a review, his reviews every year just before the budget.
At the same time of the year. Yeah.
If the board is okay with that, because I have a, I just, uh, in my mind, that's what we needed to do, but the board hasn't okayed that yet, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully in the next board meeting we'll okay that.
Okay, so. So it shouldn't say consecutive, it's just four, four meetings.
Just four meetings, yeah.
I think four, four meetings. Now the.
Unexcused meetings.
Right. But then you get into the reasons for that, you, the board would accept as excused. And of course, it could be lying too.
Well, yeah, but how are we ever going to find that out? I'm not gonna.
Okay.
So.
We should, oh, excused means that they contacted.
They contacted you, yeah.
Unexcused means there was no contact.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so.
I don't think we should have to qualify what constitutes excused.
Well, we kind of, what you did, it's up to the board, if you consider it as excused. But it, yes, it's deemed acceptable to the board of commissioners, if the excuse is deemed acceptable.
Alright, well, what is acceptable, just for chuckles, what do we, what do we say that means, why, why should they?
Well, that's, that's the whole, to me, it's like, I think just if they contact you, because it says contact you or me, I mean, well, the chair or the executive.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's, it's like, okay, I have to work, I can't get out of work, I'm in Egypt. I don't have a babysitter for my kids. I'm in the hospital, and honestly, it's none of our business, medical.
Yeah, really. That's right, as long as they contacted, because see, that's the criteria.
I think that's what your contact, because we can't do anything anyway except for give them a letter. We can't get rid of them.
That's right, right, but we just have to have a system.
Right.
And and within that system, there are certainly ways where maybe we can make improvements, you know, by by working with that individual.
I suppose if somebody called and said, hey, Debbie, I'm not going to be at the meeting tomorrow because I fucking don't want to be there.
You just said that F where I'm recording.
Sorry. Then I might say, okay, you don't have to be there, but I'm going to market as an unexcused.
Yeah, well, then there you go, I mean, this is, really, this is just, uh, when people read this and they sign off on it, they understand, the power in this is that they understand what this means and that it's not that implicit, it means you're really supposed to attend meetings and stuff comes up. But we really, you know, it is unacceptable to have unexcused.
Yes, without calling, without calling.
Yeah, and yeah, without calling, and so, you know, a person, they are elected or appointed. We do not have the power to to, uh,
To take the board.
let them go, so, you know, this is just the bit of a corrective procedure as we've got.
Yep.
Alright.
I would, I would like to, um, perhaps put this forward, is that if you do miss four meetings, you can't be on any committees because you haven't kept up with anything.
I suppose we could do that.
Well, maybe, yeah, that's maybe another discretionary thing of the chair to, because you're, the chair appoints people on committees, and you don't have to make a big fanfare of it. But if you've really got something coming down the pike, you know, where you've got a committee meeting. I mean, how many committees, actually, I think all of our committees could probably have one person absent. That, because, you know, you've got, you've got, committees usually are comprised of administrative.
But would only be three board members per year, we would never have a committee with four board members.
Right, so, you know, three board members, and you could, and if you could get through a process with two, if you had to.
Except for evaluation, I wouldn't want to do an evaluation.
Well, then, then what you do is, and I don't know where this would fit in, so you could just appoint someone to fill in the slots.
So we could do that, so, okay, so I would be okay with that. So, meet with the member and discuss attendance and other issues concerning board commissioner duties, okay, so we'll do that.
I guess it's.
Which down to, help, help me out, I'm not. Three A. I'm, okay, so we're gonna, oh, let's go back to three. Oh wait, wait a minute, let's go back to two. Because the determination of the request, excused or not excused, will be part of, oh, okay, that's, will be part, that should stay.
That should stay. That means they've called or not called, pretty much.
Yeah. Right. If a commissioner fails to attend four regular board meetings within a one-year period with out an excuse or otherwise fails to perform any of the duties as a commissioner, the board chair at the chair's discretion may take the following options, okay?
Okay.
Meet with the member, we're all good with that.
Yep.
The member who's missed four meetings without excuse within twelve-month period will be notified with a written notice signed by the board. The notice will contain the time and place of the next scheduled board of commissioners meeting, at which time the commissioner's attendance will be discussed. So are we going to discuss this?
Can I have, I just want to change something.
Yes.
I think that that first one, A, meet with the member, should be, not, should not be there. I think that it should be down.
Well, that's the initial thing.
Well, see, it's, it's here, meeting with, it's, it's under E, meeting with the board chair. And I don't, this is, this isn't, obviously, I didn't do this right, written notice, ask for consideration from SDAO. I'm not quite, I think that was my note, I should.
Well, I think that, I I was going to come to that, I think that should come out, because SDAO, because we've already talked to the,
Yeah, oh yeah.
I think we were going to call SDAO and ask them, and we found out that it's, yeah.
Right. These are my notes, okay.
I am very sorry.
No, 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 that's.
I was really tired about to do it, sorry. So, so A, because you and I talked about A, it's kind of like disciplin- disciplinary, the first time you get disciplined, it's a verbal notice, so A is a verbal notice.
Okay, I like it, I like A at the top.
Leaving, yeah, leaving that, leaving that first, okay. B and C we're going to combine.
Okay.
So B, basically, after four meetings, it's going to get a notice from the board.
Well, B and D also, because it's talking about the notice again.
Okay, yeah, what it, it's.
I although, I'm, I'm kind of okay with B, C, and D, because it just kind of breaks them out, you know, either you could put them together or not.
I think putting them together would make it cleaner.
Okay.
Well, I don't.
Should there be something said to differences?
Well, here's the thing, is that you know where I was going when I first read this? I felt like every one of these things became more incrementally, you know.
Yes.
Strident or whatever the word is, but actually, this, all this, this is just spelling out the process. It's not, you know, there's not this ultimate thing of like, you know, dismissal or anything like that. So, I mean, if, you could just say, you don't have to say the notice, the notice. Uh, the notice, okay, B, C, and D, uh, you know.
B, C, and D is basically.
You could put them all together, I mean, I I'm okay with it, because it really just talks about one thing.
Yeah. Because shouldn't they be sent a notice that says you're on notice and you're going to meet with the board chair? It should, I think they should get the notice before they meet with you.
Really?
You don't, okay. Verbal then written, because B, C, D together.
So then, when, when do I send, so you've already met with them and they've missed four meetings?
Yes.
Why would I send them, what would, what would. Because that's the nature of it.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, oh, oh, wait, wait, wait.
You know, then you get the verbal, then you get a written.
Okay, wait a minute, but when, so you're going to get the verbal.
No, but though.
Okay, you get the verbal, and then. Do they miss another meeting and then they get the written? And would that be just one?
So that would be the reply. That they get the written. See what I'm saying, if they got the written at first and it said. Then so should we say three absent, unexcused absences, and then the fourth one, the fourth one, they get a written notice.
Same.
You know, that's, okay, okay, so.
So three, 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 then they get talked to. And four.
Verbal.
Then once, and then if they miss another meeting, then they get written notice. So if you put B, C, and D together, it's going to be written notice.
After, on the fourth absence.
Of the fourth absence that same year.
Is that going to be combined, because it's.
Yeah.
So B, C, and D are combined, and I think that since three says, you know, like three, you know, the number three, uh, it already says three regular board meetings, so then A, you don't really have to delineate it. You're going to get a verbal after three, that, I think that's pretty explicit.
Okay. Then, so B should be, B should start out being.
Oh, the fourth.
If another meeting is missed, then a written notice from the board will be sent. Yeah.
And so it's going to say, if the member misses another meeting, which would then be a total of four.
Another year. Yes.
For the twelve-month period.
Yes.
They will be notified with a written notice signed by the board.
Yes.
Can you go and write that down?
Yeah.
Okay.
With all that stuff in there, time and place and all that stuff.
Yeah.
The notice will contain the time and place, and that the board's concerned about missing meetings.
Okay.
And then, E. And, uh, so if, so then if they miss number five, because number four, they get the written, if they miss another one, are, is this something we would do in open meetings?
Well, this, this one is, I don't even know if this is legal, because I I just had lived this, this is the part I really have lived. Shall discuss the attendance matter, considering options, including changing the date, time, oh, sorry.
Everyone.
Yeah, that's, what's that, we're supposed to change our.
No, no, we're not supposed to, but would you?
But you could.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, but would you?
If the person said, I just can't make it, I want to be on this board, but I can't wait.
But they knew that, no.
Okay, I don't think that.
They knew that when they took that decision.
So what are you going to offer, what's the board going to offer to the person?
That it will be a public censure, and the reason is.
Public what?
Censure, the reason is this.
What is that? Censure means you're, you're get called on the carpet.
Oh, okay.
Because when you miss four meetings, you have prob, I haven't been reading the material. So, uh, we can't do anything about getting rid of them, but the public should know that this person, unless they're ill or something serious like that, um, hasn't fulfilled his or her duties.
Okay.
Which is reading.
Yeah, see, and this all goes back, you're right, to the orientation. And, you know, when someone is even being considered, you know, there's a conversation with someone um, about going, getting on the board. That has got to be really explicit, and the, the, this, the time, the minimum time requirement is to participate in a monthly meeting. There, and kind of spell it out for them, you know, this is the, the.
Well, that's in the.
Fourth, first, right, you know, and, and, you know, this is really what is required, and to go over this, that, you know, we do not have the authority to, um,
Dismiss.
Whatever that is, dismiss you.
Terminate.
Terminate you from the, at the board, but, but there are certain things that we, we do have a process to try to help ensure that you have a, that you're a successful board member.
So, before we get to that part though, okay, B, that they've missed four meetings and have written.
Yeah.
E, they have to miss another meeting?
No, after, I thought they missed the fourth one, they.
The fourth one, and then they get written notice from the board.
Well, that's. No, that, the fourth, that, that's, that means B, C, and D, you know, that's.
Yeah, but we're to E now, we're to E.
Fourth, now I E. At the board commissioners meeting.
E is when we take it in front of God and in front of everyone.
There's, there's a procedure. So I'm discussing. And that's, is that, is that going to be a fifth?
Is that going to be a fifth?
Yeah, no, it, it's, the thing is, is that, you know, it's, E is probably just saying it will be noted in the, um, at the, uh, next board, I mean, what is the purpose of that really? Other than just, you know, public flogging, you know, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if board members are employees, so I don't know if you can take that into an executive session or not.
No. I don't think so.
So you do it out in public, but.
I don't think there's a reason to take it, you know, I don't think so.
I mean, in a way, this is protecting the board.
Yes, but, but you've got three and four meetings, when does E come in?
The fourth.
On the fourth, well, then why are we sending them a letter?
Because that's just what we do, first we have a.
We're going to send them a letter and take them public?
Well, do we, what's the purpose, say, what, let's roll around the idea, what is the purpose of taking it public other than just note, I I don't even know, to me, it's like.
It could be noted.
I don't know that there's any purpose in making it public.
Other than embarrassing.
No, what the purpose is, is that this person was elected by the public and they are not doing his or her duties.
But that could be, with that, at number four, they've missed four meetings, they've got the, well, they've missed four meetings. The board's now going to send them a letter, the board's going to have to make a motion to do that.
To send the letter?
So that will be out in public.
Well, then that's enough, because it will be noted at that meeting, and it is something that will, yeah.
At that meeting, so.
And at that point, you know, it will be issued to that individual, and, uh, it's out of our hands.
It'll be added to the agenda, okay, because the agenda is done. And Commissioner X missed three meetings, got the verbal talk to. Number four, now has missed four meetings without an excuse. Add it to the agenda at the next board meeting, the board meeting that he's missing, number four, it's added to the agenda. The board chair shall write a letter to Commissioner X that he has now missed, or she has now missed, they have missed four meetings, and it's really important, blah, 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 blah. Whatever's going to be in that letter.
And I think it should.
And that'll be there, that board member won't be there, because this is the fourth unexcused meeting they've had. Does that make sense?
But it's not like you, you don't know until the, the day, so how would it get into the, you.
We always.
Have to add to it, we have to add to the agenda.
We always change, yeah. We always change, yeah.
Have to add to it, we have to add to the agenda, adjust the agenda.
Yeah, just add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
And item on the agenda. Yeah. It's time, okay, look, so and so did not call in, um, so we will, and this happens to be this person's fourth unexcused.
And you just run it past.
We're gonna add it to the agenda, but the board would like to do.
And in our policies, we do have, um, it is a part of our policy to write a written.
Yes.
Notice to the individual that they have now missed four, four meetings.
I, Commissioner Reed would.
And that's the end of it, there's no other thing we could say about it.
Yes. Yeah. Does that make sense, Mary?
I'm not sure if I'm following yet, so let me review because I'm not sure. Okay, so you're not gonna meet with them?
Hey, yes, we are meeting with them.
Well, they're gonna miss my third one, okay.
But, let's just re, let's write it, let's wordsmith it for the, it's for the benefit of Mary who's gonna end up writing it.
But I wanna do it right, I wanna write it.
That's what I'm saying.
If a commis, A is definite, A stays.
No, 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 we're going back up to, if a, number three.
Oh. Okay, number three.
If a commissioner fails to attend three regular or meeting. Is that all correct, correct?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, within a one period.
One year period.
One year period, one, okay, so here's where, fiscal year is what you're saying.
Yes.
With, so it's in, within a fiscal year.
Well, how about one year and then in parentheses fiscal. Year.
I think just fiscal year.
Fiscal year?
Yeah, okay.
Without an excuse. And do you want me to take out the or otherwise fails to perform any of the duties?
Oh, yeah, that's right, cause that was, that's just huge, what is that all about? I'd say delete that.
It was in a policy.
It was in a policy.
Well, one of the duties is to prepare for as a commissioner.
Yeah.
To be, read the package.
But this subject is attendance, so let's just, yeah, you know what I'm saying, it really is attendance, so.
So it's just.
Okay, without an excuse, as commissioner, the board chair at the chair's discretion.
Wait a minute.
Will take the following options.
I think that you, you added something there as an aside, but I wanna make sure, let me tell you how I'm reading it, see if it fits with what you're saying. If a commissioner fails to attend three regular board meetings within a fiscal year period without an excuse. The board chair at the board, at the chair's discretion may take the following options. Is that what you have?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And then that's a colon, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, I had that already down.
Colon.
Okay.
A. Meet with the member and discuss attendance or other issues concerning board commission duties. B. If a meeting, if a, if a, a fourth meeting is missed without excuse within.
Fiscal year.
The fiscal year. The board member. Wait a minute. Within the fiscal year period. The board member will be notified with a written notice signed by the board. So, I'll say it again, if a fourth meeting is missed without excuse within the fiscal year. Period, the board member will be notified with a written notice signed by the board.
Yeah.
I have just one little verification, if a fourth unexcused meeting.
Right, okay, good, I, good one, it says.
Without excuse, so you might have changed it.
Oh, without excuse.
You might have changed it.
Without excuses, fine, without excuses.
Okay, okay.
And would you, with A, still include or other issues concerning board commissioner duties?
Meet with the member and discuss attendance. Three A.
Yeah, probably no, probably take it out.
Where is this?
Three A, right back up in A.
Three A.
Meet with the member.
Oh.
Concerning. And discuss attendance and then it has or other issues concerning board commissioner duties.
I guess maybe just say attendance.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, my goodness, what, where, where would we go there, that would be the bottomless pit.
Okay.
Okay, so C, is that, uh.
That's B and B, C and D, that puts those three together.
Okay. Okay, so we're okay with those?
Okay.
As an issue.
A, the time and place of the next scheduled board or commissioners meeting. At which time the commissioner's attendance will be discussed?
Oh, will be discussed, no, we're not doing that, I, I think that's. That, that's, that was the, delete that.
Yeah.
Delete the whole thing?
Because we're gonna discuss it.
Or notice will contain a request.
For. Yeah, because we'll discuss that whether they get a written notice or not. So be discussed without them.
So you delete C?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, so that, then D becomes C, the notice will contain a request for the individual to attend the meeting. Or submit in writing an explanation of the commissioner's lack of attendance. Is that scanned?
I think so.
Okay.
So that's, uh.
That's what will be in the. At least that there, they get a chance for rebuttal, kind of.
Okay, and that's.
It goes on record.
Three C.
So that's C.
Um. It could be B, cause it's part of.
Yeah, move it up to B.
And with. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's what.
Oh, oh, that's right, we were gonna combine.
Correct, yeah, so we're eliminating C, correct?
All right, so this is correct, so this is B.
Right, and D we're keeping, but it's gonna be under B, right?
Okay, all right, good, so now we've got A and B and then what's this thing that is formerly known as E?
Yeah.
Uh.
I don't think we need that.
Would there's no discussion or moving around of dates?
Delete it.
So.
Yeah, delete it, I think he used deleted.
Okay. And then that would include these things on the second page.
On the second page excluded.
Yep, we don't need the second page now.
That's a lot, cleanup, alright.
So, right hook.
Do I get an award for that?
You did good, alright.
We all do.
Alright. Next on our list, oh, next on our list, B three oh seven, value to attend meetings.
That's the same thing.
Ah.
Okay, throw it out.
Sorry, did I?
Okay.
I told you that.
It's gone, Mary was doing this Friday night at midnight, wouldn't you know, I went, I went, I went.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Well, I got home, I got home by eleven thirty.
B three oh eight, board of commissioners, board vacancy.
And I wasn't drinking any water.
Maybe you should sip it.
You're dehydrated.
Maybe you should.
No, no, that was a great spring.
Oh, Pam, you wanna read this one? Do you wanna, you want us to wait?
I bet. Dylan was my post visa trip.
She's more important.
I'm hot on her, I'm a great late problem. Okay, far away, so we're doing B three oh nine?
Okay.
Oh, eight.
Oh, okay. Return board vacancy.
Yes.
The, the board shall fill a pause, a vacancy on the board by appointment, by a majority, the remaining members of the governing body.
No, 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 the new one, it's on the top, it's there, yeah.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
That's the one we've been working with, this is, this is the one.
And we changed it.
Three oh nine.
Three, three oh eight.
Why don't you go ahead and shuffle your papers, Pam? Get your papers in order.
I'll do it, I'll read three oh.
Take, take mine.
I'll, I can read three oh eight what you're looking for.
No, we better, we better just take it one at a time here, we gotta get this right.
Okay, here, you put next on it.
Oh, you.
There we go.
Next the wrong line.
Okay.
Go for it.
The board shall fill a vacancy on the board by requesting applications or by appointment. By a majority of the remaining members of the governing body. O R S one ninety-eight point three two zero zero, filling of vacancies on boards of certain, what?
Of certain districts.
Maybe, or maybe that is included in the parentheses.
Yes.
The dash, make sure we know what I'm saying, cause it, that's what it's about.
Yep. I corrected that.
Okay.
Okay. One, the board chair or the vice chair will notify the board of any board members resignation. Two, following the acceptance of a board member's resignation, comma. The board may request applications be submitted from the public and appoint at the next board meeting or with board approval. Point a new board following a resignation. Well, three, the fourth team will serve until a successor can be elected at the next regular special district election.
Okay, I'm gonna need to read this again from my. So we, we can either, we could fill the vacancy, uh, by requesting applications or by appointment.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, wouldn't that be like advertising or posting?
Well, if we, if we, if we were going to, oh, without applications, yes, then Mary would do her magic. And put it out there that we were taking applications.
Mm-hmm. Has this always been this way?
No, we added, we added the applications, cause the other did not have application.
Bad? Was just appointed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so this, very nice to be able to have that option to, uh, appoint. Or because of, you know, some kind of a time crunch or something like we did actually experience.
So what, what would happen is Commissioner X has resigned. Would the board like to take applications or would the board. Want to appoint at this meeting and then somebody will make a motion and we'll vote on it and we'll do whatever the motion says.
So let's say somebody says, well, I'd like to do an application and only three people, there's not a majority. So then we just appoint, that would flip it to.
Appoint, I would say, yeah, okay, all right, well, that failed, so I guess we'll appoint, do I have any nominations? And if you have no nominations, we're gonna have to go back to applications. But there again, somebody say, I would like to appoint Mr. Smith. All right, and then we take another vote, if that fails, it's gonna have to go to application.
Um, I think this is confusing in that it would, it seems like these should be reversed. And there should maybe be another number, for instance, and it just would happen to us. You, I believe, asked the board. For permission to appoint, wasn't there some, a vote taken? Not just on Paul, but it seems like prior to that, you asked around the room, is it okay to appoint, did you, I believe?
I think so, because we had, yeah, because I had you read everything you had found out.
The O R S.
Or we could appoint.
Mm-hmm.
Deanna, what made her, she didn't think that was right, and I think you mentioned it, but it was the only two. And, uh, so then Paul had been talked about, so then we took a vote to appoint Paul.
Or someone nominated him.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know, if you, if people are recruiting, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, you're just talking to people, right? And encouraging them to apply.
Mm-hmm.
You know, or encouraging, or, or, you know, encouraging them to say, uh, you know, like I'm talking to you and, and, you know, maybe you've got. Opening on the board, would you be interested, here's, you know, I'm gonna have a discussion with you, here's kind of what the criteria is.
Yeah.
Um, would you be interested in, uh, being an appointee? You know, if, if we ended up, we're gonna either be able to appoint. Or we're gonna have to open it up for applications, so you could either be a candidate for appointment or to apply. And, you know, cause I, because I think that we also need to.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do what we can to.
Okay, try to.
But try to find people to.
We, and we, we, we always.
Because that supplements the application process where you send it out to the community, you have a.
And.
Uh, it just adds to the applicant, applicant pool.
And we have. But we have every time, since I've been on the board.
More than, more than a point, way more than a point.
We have always done that.
Yeah, so I think this is, this is good, you know, it's, it has, it provides both options.
We could do, if we want another number, so we could do, our chair, vice chair will notify the board of any board members resignations. Number two, the board will decide whether they wanna take applications or appoint. Well, that's what this says, that's what it says.
I guess, I disagree, I think that, uh, you should open it up for.
But.
And if no one applies, applications.
Well, and it does, it does give us that, but it's gonna be, the, but the board's gonna vote on it. One way or the other, so if the board wants to appoint right then and there.
I just.
Then there was enough votes, I think the board should have.
The authority to do that when needed.
Yeah.
Of course, it should be an understanding, so maybe in the wording, it, it, there, the emphasis is on. Send it out to bid or whatever you call it, you know, announce, announce the applications are open. And then if, and, but the board also, and the board has the discretion to, uh, vote to appoint.
I still think that it should be open to the public.
Well, I think this should go to the board the way it is and let the board decide.
Okay, well, that's running it up the cycle one more time.
Cause we can't make that decision anyway, but I think the board.
Okay, well, let's just say, you know, I mean, how, what, what's the likelihood of us.
Very.
Not having, that, what, what's, what is the, when would necessitate us appointing and not opening an application?
When we don't have a quorum.
If we don't have a quorum, then it goes to the county commissioners.
No, then you appoint someone, so if you don't have a quorum, someone resigns and by the resignation, you don't have a quorum. And so you would open that up for it.
If you don't have a quorum, you can't appoint.
Well, with a quorum is four people, we're not gonna lose three people.
But it's written clearly, yeah, it is written clearly in the bylaws, or not bylaws, but in the O R S is that.
Yeah.
If you need, and if you don't have a quorum, you have to get a quorum and the county will.
Okay, scratch it, scratch it.
If you can, if you can amongst yourselves.
Yeah, that's fairly unlikely that we, it's gonna be three down.
Yeah. But, following the acceptance of a board member's resignation, comma, the board may request application be submitted. Or, I think that word or should be added there. Okay, be submitted from the public, because, well, how we do that then, we'll take, and this is the point though. Is that if you send out and we put pu, public notice, it will take another month to get that, another board member.
Right.
To get applicants, so that process takes a month. So, if we put application be submitted from the public or appoint, not and.
Okay.
Or appoint. At the next board meeting. Oh, no, no, sorry.
Do we need it, would it be helpful that?
No, I, I just, let me, can I finish this please?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so I'm on here, probably be submitted from the public and appoint at the next board meeting or. With the board appro, with board approval, appoint a new member. The board, board member following the resignation.
So does that mean if no one applies, you appoint someone at the next meeting?
No. No. No.
Okay.
It means you could, if the board approves it, you could appoint at that meeting.
And so you appoint from where? I mean, that, uh. I mean, that, it's not a, yeah, that wasn't a democratic process. You just put out one name.
But it was in the ORS, it was in our policy prior that we could do that.
But there was somebody in our, in the meeting, that, that, they were here. I mean, the attend of the meeting, that someone at the meeting.
They wouldn't necessarily even have to be here to do that.
No.
So, I mean, up until the last Paul's appointment, it was always publicized.
No, we've had appointees, definitely. We have had appointees.
Yeah, you appoint them.
No, we've had appointees and not gone to the public before.
I mean, because we're on your script.
Well, I don't want.
We know, I mean, we're aware of that, but.
And I think, I think it's, I think it's common knowledge that if you can, if you've got the time and you can, put it out to applications. I think that's common knowledge, that that's what we, if we have it this way, we can do that. I just felt that we had somebody that was ready to go. We had two months because we didn't have a meeting in December. There were sixty days before we could appoint. Paul was more than qualified.
I never said he wasn't.
And we had classes that ODOT had said we had to take during that time period.
There's something else.
Well, it was an unusual time where we went through the normal channels and we did a vote and we decided to appoint.
And that was the board decision.
But, but applications should always be at the top of the bill.
And with this, we have applications, if that's what the board wants to do. We also have it and the board gets to decide at the time, do we do applications or do we appoint today? And that would be the board's decision.
Well, that's a decision we could make right then.
Right then?
Yeah.
So I think this covers.
I mean, we could have miles and miles of clarification on it, but it, I think it does stand up to, to what it means. But Pam, if you're wavering, you know, what, what's, what are you wavering about?
Well, if I understand correctly, it's on the know-it. Is that the advertisement of the position would be first and then, no? It's up to the board whether.
It's up to the board whether we advertise or whether we appoint that day.
So the appointment would have to be made before the meeting?
No.
We didn't make any appointment before the meeting.
Search.
Yeah.
Search or something. Yeah, I mean, right? So.
Following the acceptance of a board member's resignation, that took place first.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But when you're doing accept, saying the board votes to appoint someone right then and there, that person has to be chosen. Not chosen, selected.
Selected.
Not voted, before the meeting.
Not before the meeting, at the meeting.
Well, how do you get the first?
Okay, you don't, okay, let's say Paul didn't come. Let's say Paul wasn't here the other day, okay? He's gone. But I had talked to Paul. I said, hey, it sounds like Deanna's gonna resign. Because she had talked to me. She said, I'm gonna resign.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, will you think about it until the next meeting?
Right.
Okay. So Paul and I are talking and I go, hey, it sounds like Deanna's gonna be resigning. Oh, I'm gonna be on the board. I said, are you sure? He goes, yeah. I said, I'll call you back later. So we finished our conversation and I called him back a week or so later. I said, Paul, are you still interested in being on the board? He goes, yeah, I am. I said, is it okay with your wife? Because that was one of my questions to him, because I know his wife wanted him to retire. He goes, yeah, yeah, she said it's okay. He had everything we needed, I thought.
That's not the question.
And he was ready, but that's.
That's not the question.
How would you say, how would you weave into this then, like that, we don't, we should always be doing, you know, we should always be recruiting. We should always, you know, in our community of our partners and our, in the community, we should always be talking about board, board membership.
How did you come to fill out an application?
Tamra called me on the phone.
How did Charles come to fill out an application?
I don't know.
Somebody said, hey, Charles, there's gonna be an opening on the transportation board. You should fill out an application. Okay, shoot me if you want to. Guillermo and I had been talking. He goes, I really wanna get involved in some of these community things. Okay, oh, Guillermo, the transportation board's gonna be looking for a new person on the board.
I applied from newspaper.
Okay.
And I think both are very valid and I think we need to have the public announcement. I think ninety-nine percent of the time, and that would be utilized. But it's at that point when we know someone is going out, we, the board makes the decision by vote as to how it wants to recruit and add another member.
My first choice is not appointing at that meeting. My first choice would be to take applications if there were special circumstances. And that's all I'm gonna say. I say, send it to the board, let the board decide on this. Because we can sit here all day and argue about this.
Just one comment. If, if you know the chair or the vice chair knows ahead of a meeting that someone's resigning, would you automatically send out, you know, advertise?
Not without board's permission.
But that person had to.
Have to go through the process.
The member has to, had to formally.
I can't make a decision on anything without your permission. I can't tell Paul, oh, we'll, we'll appoint you. Because that's up to the board.
Well, it has to, you need to tell the next meeting.
I suggested.
Or could you call a special meeting on Zoom?
With enough notice. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Like I said, we can sit here all day and you and I are never gonna agree on it. I think we send it to the board and let the board decide.
But I do think that we need to, that the emphasis should be on having the opportunity to draw from the greater community by way of application. And that should always be something that we do. And I, there's a variety of reasons for that, a variety of reasons. But if we have a procedure where, you know, it's at that next meeting and usually if somebody's gonna be done, you know, they wanna resign, there's gonna be a meeting within a couple of weeks, probably. So I don't think the holdup's gonna be today.
Yeah, I, and I.
And I, and I'm with you, Pam. I'm gonna, I, I will, unless some crazy situation where we really gotta scramble like we did, I mean, I don't think we're gonna run across something like that.
Not very, not very often, but I think we.
I would say, yes, get the, Mary, please, you know, send those out to the public and let's see what we get. We have the opportunity to look at the applicants and then we make a decision based on that. And it's, it's got benefits beyond just the, just the applicants.
I just wanna make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a spot that we can't do it if we need to.
And by appointment at that.
If we need to.
Okay.
Okay, those on the board. Okay, now B309, Pam. There we go. I'll read this one for you. Board commissioners, political endorsements. The board shall not endorse candidates for public office. The board shall not endorse candidates for positions on the district board of commissioners. The board under no circumstances shall permit district funds to be used to support or oppose a major or candidate for office. This does not include the permitted use of public funds to conduct informational campaigns. Nothing in this policy is intended to restrict an individual's right to free speech, provided it is clear that such rights are being exercised by that individual as an individual and not as an agent of the district. Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Now, there's, Aris worked for ODOT and someone put in a political sign that she just kept at her desk. She didn't, you know, John Smith. So, and she was reprimanded.
Arlo?
No, no, no.
Oh, I said, except Arlo.
ODOT.
ODOT, oh.
I worked for, did internship for ODOT and the person was reprimanded.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yes, we get into that. It is I.O. discussion.
Reminded, reminded that they can do that.
Yeah.
Even though we had a county sheriff that used to send emails out on county email.
You're under the law, you know that.
Into that.
Violet did that.
Huh?
Violet did that. She had a basket of candy that said to me, Violet, they gave us a commission. And I told her, so, that's a, you know, we're in a public facility, let me think. Oh, yeah, well. And the other thing, and maybe this is just, okay, maybe it's okay, I don't care.
Okay, so we're good with that one?
I think it's a little murky.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard, I think.
Yeah. Or maybe just put what it said. Or, or the political signs brought into office?
I know supposedly, and I don't know if we ever did this, because.
This is about the board though.
Yeah, this is.
It's not about employees. It's not about the office. It's not about any of that.
We can't. No, no informational campaign. And as, yeah, I know, we can't, we can't do that, or the board can't.
And what the other thing is, number two, shall not endorse candidates for position on the district board. I don't understand that.
For, for this, for this district. So if, when you're running.
Yeah.
I can't endorse you.
If the board commissioner. If I'm running for commissioner, you can't endorse me?
No, not a, for the actual county board of.
Oh, the actual county.
Not just, not us, and, you know.
Oh, shouldn't, shouldn't that say county?
District. This, this district, for us. It's for us, for this district, right?
For positions.
The board shall not endorse candidates for positions.
On the county board of.
I thought it was, I thought it was the county.
I did too.
That doesn't make, okay.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Board shall not endorse candidates for positions.
I think that the district's a weird word. It should be county.
Right.
But that's kinda weird. It should just be all elected positions.
All county.
No.
Elected just.
All elected positions.
All elected positions.
Oh, yeah.
All. Elect.
Because, you know.
Yep.
Because I can't, it covers everything. I can help you campaign, but I can't endorse you.
Oh, really? So you can campaign and not endorse, that's the difference.
If you're in the, if you're, we're elected officials. We can endorse people privately, can't we? We just can't say, I'm, I'm a board of commissioner, a, a, a transportation district commissioner. We can't put our handle.
No, I don't, I don't.
Right.
Okay, so the board shall not endorse candidates for positions on, on, for any position. For any elected.
For any elected positions.
Okay.
Good, glad you found that, Pam.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on B310?
310, go ahead, Rebecca.
Selection and duties of legal counsel. One.
We decided to. Okay, good, sorry.
Lot of revisions here.
Oh, yeah.
The board shall select legal counsel for the district that is licensed and registered in the state of Oregon. Two, the board authorizes the executive director to seek legal counsel before taking action on any district issue that may precipitate litigation. Legal counsel will be sought through Special District Association of Oregon or through a board-approved attorney. If necessary, legal counsel may be sought through a referral made by Special District Association of Oregon or from the board-approved attorney. Any additional legal counsel used because of a referral must be licensed and registered in the state in which lawsuit is brought. I'm, I have no idea about that, but I'm, I'm gonna assume that that's kosher.
What, that they have to.
That last one, I mean, it makes sense.
Registered in the state.
Any additional legal counsel used because of a referral must be licensed and registered in the state in which lawsuit is brought. Well, I guess that's, makes sense. The board authorizes the executive director to seek legal counsel review of Sunset Empire Transportation District's existing and proposed agreements and contracts, including any amendments to such contracts. So there's that. That's great job, that's kosher. The board authorize, so that, so the next one is four. The board authorizes the board chair and/or the executive director to seek legal counsel independently, providing such counsel is consistent with the board's general direction. I don't know exactly what that means. What would be a, for instance, on that?
I called Spencer early on about Kevin and what we could do with him. Me calling Matt with the board's direction on many things, Emily.
Okay, all right. So you're, so we bring something up at the meeting and we say, chair or, or executive director, would you please check up on this?
Yeah.
And that's.
I always went with Josh or Spencer first because he's SDAO. And then he would say, if he could fix it, okay, he'd fix it. Or he'd say, oh, that's something you may need to go to Josh, that's our, that's our personal.
That's our.
Our organization is legal counsel.
Appointing.
Correct.
And then he would say, ooh, you need to talk to Matt about that. He's the labor guy. So, but I would, because SDAO cheaper than Josh than Matt. So I always went through.
Oh, you, oh, SDAO, oh.
So I always started with SDAO first.
Is that clear on this?
That's just what the executive director told me when I started.
Because that would, but I'd like to see that in writing, so that, I'm not sure.
It says legal counsel will be sought through Special District Association of Oregon or through the board-approved attorney.
What do you mean? I don't read well.
Number two, number two. Number three?
Number two.
Number two.
Okay.
Says it's through SDAO, Special District Association.
Well, then that's, that is the same, that's, that's what Debbie just said she did. She goes to SDAO first.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, I think that it's kind of subjective and who you do go to because, you know, if it is a labor issue, you go straight to Matt.
Oh, I'd still go through SDAO first.
But, but because I mean, for number two. But, but because I mean, for number two and number three, you would, you would determine Josh. How would you determine Josh or Matt? It wouldn't necessarily be Josh second.
If it is, if... I think it would, it would depend on how serious the issue was.
So, so the question is, does it need, this need to be spelled out in the policy?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Because the board's gonna, we're gonna talk about it before it's done.
And, and it's pretty, uh, understood what, but, you know, it's, it's a good, it's always good, Debbie, to take that extra twenty seconds to educate people each time it comes up. That, you know, well, I, we always go to SDAO first, Spencer. As a reminder, everybody, uh, you know, our own legal counsel is Josh. And, you know, if it's a labor-specific issue, we go to Matt. And put, and add their last names, but I don't think it needs me in the policy.
No, no. And who go, who knows, next week, Matt may not be there. Could be somebody else. So, I think, I think two's good.
Okay. So then.
Three.
The board authorizes the executive director to seek legal counsel review of Sunset Empire Transportation District's existing and proposed agreements and contracts, including any amendments for such contracts. Good.
Well, what has, has bothered me over the years is that we're presented with some legal documents that I think should be reviewed by a lawyer. And you have no idea if it has been, some of them. I can't give you an example, but that has crossed my mind with some of the, uh, material we've been presented. And I don't know how to put that in our duties, um...
But it says here, and it has always said, before this, you had a policy that all contracts and legal, um, agreements would be approved. They will be, they all have been.
And they all are, except ODOTs.
Right.
Because ODOTs, you could send it to an attorney, and the attorney could pick it apart, and ODOT's gonna say, "Sorry, this is our contract. Take it or leave it." But everything else has gone through our, um, union contract, went through the attorney before Jeff signed it.
But how do we know? Sometimes we don't know.
They're talking. It, it's always talked about in our meetings.
Well, then, are you, Pam, asking it to have that somehow written in here so that people know?
Well, I mean, like, they could just sign it or something. No, the contract, you guys...
So, how about if it says that you could have it verified? That you want it to be verified, that it was reviewed correctly?
Right.
Okay. So, the board authorizes the executive director to seek legal counsel review of Sunset Empire Transportation District. So, contracts, including amendments such, so how can I put in here verify?
And will, comma, and will be... Um, and verification will be available to the board.
Okay.
Not available.
Made available to the board.
Okay, give me another word.
Okay, we, um... It will be noted on the document. Can that be done?
Well, it can't be. Don't think so, because you'd have to change the document. The document comes from the state or comes from someplace else. So, if the, uh, a letter, I've got a letter, a letter of verification will accompany the document.
Or you can just say, "reviewed by"? Can you put that in the document?
No.
No, you can't.
I don't think, because we don't write the document. It is sent to us, you know, a, a contract is sent to us.
Right.
And to have the attorney then take it and change it can't happen.
Okay, verification will be... And that will be accompanied by the document.
So, it could be, no. So, Craig sends documented. How about verification will be documented?
Okay, and verification of legal review
Will be documented.
And approval will accompany a doc, will accompany the document?
Will, will be documented?
No, accompany.
Will accompany contract or whatever.
Accompany.
Contract or agreements.
Contract or agreement.
So, Craig sends a copy of contract to Josh. Josh reads it and sends an email back to Craig saying, "Yeah, this looks good." That email would be...
Attached to it.
Would that be enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there are, there are good times, and I can't remember what they are, that have been reviewed.
Well, and Jeff always just said, "Yeah, it would be an attorney," so a lot more than that.
Okay, so, let me read it one more time. So, and contracts and...
Which, which number now?
Well, it's a start over. Three. The board authorizes the executive director to seek legal counsel review of SETD's existing and proposed agreements and contracts, including any amendments to such contracts. And verification, and that should be a new word, new sense.
Yep.
Verification will be, verification of legal review and approval will be...
Will accompany the document.
Will be accompanied by the document.
Will accompany the...
Will accompany the document.
Yep. So, the document's gonna be in the agenda?
Got it.
Or in our packet with an email or something from the attorney saying the attorney has looked at it?
That's just a protection for, do I have a lawyer there? Not sure if he or she has read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Uh-oh.
Or I took it by the... Four. The board authorizes the board chair and/or the executive director to seek legal counsel independently, providing such counsel is consistent with the board's general direction. Okay?
That's a question.
Yeah.
I, it, the seven, that's fine. So... Something's going on with Craig. I noticed that. I'm just kidding.
Hey, is he okay? Is he going, is he going bad, man?
He's going better, yeah.
Getting better.
And... And I want to, I, I wanna call the attorney, because he's acting weird and what... But I don't, I can do that without the board's approval. Well, I mean, I...
That's what this says.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's kind of what this says.
Because, because I need information before I can take it to the board.
This is what's giving you that authorization.
I'm good. I, I, I think that's what I'm reading here. It generally says that.
So, what, um... You don't have to have a board meeting for you to call an attorney on an issue.
So, what does providing such counsel is consistent with the board's general, um, direction? That doesn't really say a whole lot. I mean, I'd rather see it deleted than, or something that's a little...
That, it does, it does say that I can't just call the attorney, just have a conversation.
Yeah, it, it's weird. It is kind of weird.
It is kind of weird, but it does give a little bit that I, you have to have some reason to call.
Okay.
Well, well, how about if it said, "Providing such counsel is consistent with board's policies"?
Right. Board policies and maybe, um, I don't know if we can do this. And, uh, executive director's duties. Just with the last situation.
And/or the director to seek legal counsel independently. I, I believe, I, independently means you're going outside of this box. And I, I think it should say policy, because that means they have to be registered in the state of Oregon. And without saying that again, you're, you're, you would be having, looking for legal counsel
Yeah.
that applies, that, that...
Well, you can't, you can't use a lawyer that's not registered here.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's a...
So, is, is, the question is, what you were just asking is, is consistent with the board's general direction? That doesn't make sense. But if it says, "Consistent with board policies..."
Yes.
Is there, but then that raises a question. Is there somewhere in our policies about if, you know, uh, the executive director, we have a major problem and we've got an issue, uh... Do we have something in here about that?
No.
Because really what it, I, I think that's what it's implying, is that I said the board chair has the discretion to speak with, uh, with legal counsel. And we better back that up with something somewhere else in the policy if we say based on the board's general direction.
Right.
I, I think this policy allow, is that policy that allows the executive director to seek legal counsel. And I think this is, this number four is the statement that allows them to.
Yeah, but you have to put why. I mean, what they're basing it on. So, if you put board policies and the duties of an executive director...
Yeah, but you know what I'm thinking? It's like, let's just reword this a little bit. Instead of providing such counsel is consistent with the board's general direction, um, I would say not, that's, needs to be reworded, is that...
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying. It should say, if it says policy, then it's in Oregon. If it says policy and this description up here, I'm sorry, go back to it, but... I, I, if it doesn't say that, then I don't think the line should be in there.
Yeah, because either, it is kind of truncated. I mean, it is pretty short and sweet if it, if that was deleted. It just, but it could stand alone. It says, "The board authorizes the board chair and/or executive, executive director to seek legal counsel independently," period.
Yeah, but you do have to give a reason.
All right.
With board policy.
But instead of providing, you could say something like, you know, if, this is the right wording, but, you know, if the situation necessitates it or something.
And how about, uh, we're, we are the executive director's supervisor. So, somewhere along the line, that has, that's when you can do it. Either board policies or personnel policies pertaining to the director.
I don't know if we should make it so narrow of a scope that it's just about the executive director.
No, I said board policies and personnel policy.
You can't go under personnel.
Why not?
You, we don't give any, this HR, it's, it's, yeah, that's...
Well, we are in charge of the executive director.
Job description then?
Job description?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. There, there's a board, um, policy here with, uh, the executive director duties and responsibilities.
Well, it's so different. Look at, the executive director would call the legal counsel by something. Could be very different. The, the, the executive, the chair of the board can only work within the confines of what the board's scope is. So, it's really just basically giving authorization to both of those entities. We get into the tall weeds when we start talking about why.
Going too far.
There, but why they, they get, get to do that. There's a number of reasons why.
Hundreds. Providing such counsel is consistent with our board's dr, general direction, I...
Well, I brought that, board policies, general direction doesn't, that's nothing legal.
Well, what does that mean? Is that they've been directed? Or this general direction is really not appropriate wording?
I think you say board policies.
Okay.
I just think you say board policies.
Well, at least that would, you know, be more...
Yeah, at least would be...
More specific.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd be in this book, you know what I'm saying? Be in here.
Right.
Okay.
And then the board expect, I'm sorry, let's keep reading, because it, the rest of it helps a lot.
Okay.
Are we saying with board's policies or just policies?
Yeah, with, with board's policies, period.
Yeah.
Number five, the board expects legal counsel to provide legal advice by responding to specific requests as well as proactively advising on changes to the laws that affect the district. That's good.
Great.
Okay. Uh, six. In the event that either the board chair or the executive director independently seeks legal counsel, in such contact should be reported to the full board at the earliest convenience. We could leave it the same. I think it's, there, there might be some situations where you'd have to hold the cards closer to the vest. Uh, maybe that would get us into a little sticky wicked if we had, had to report something that was really still, um, evolving legally, like with, uh, what's her name?
Emily.
Emily.
Well, we could call the executive.
Executive session.
Session.
I think that, that's what would happen. You'd go in executive session if it was...
If it was really important, we'd call a special meeting and go into executive session.
So, I think that's good. I mean, a, a good example is what's happened in the last year.
Yeah.
If we have that, how many times we have executive sessions?
Number six covers it.
It does.
Well, does it, um... prevent the executive director using a lawyer to protect himself or herself without permission from the board?
What was your comment?
He might call to get some advice on what he could or could not do legally.
Well, okay, so, fourth, well... If there is a situation that involves the executive director and he or she may need legal counsel for them, the person, for themselves, does the direct, director have to notify the board before he or she does that? So, in other words, they would be paying, the district would be paying legal fees.
They have to get their own attorneys.
So, how do you prevent them that they don't?
That's their, that's their responsibility.
Prevent them from...
And the, and I'm sure that the attorney would turn them around
That's right.
and say, "You gotta get your own attorney."
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. If, if he, if the director called Josh and said, "Hey, blah, 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 blah." Josh should have enough knowledge that he goes, "Hmm, that's not something, that's a conflict of interest with my contractor, with SETD. What you're talking about is a personal issue. You need to hire your own attorney."
So, if the, an executive director called up and said, "I'm being sued," for whatever reason, we're just going to have to trust it to our attorney?
It's kind of like when we, as the board, hired Matt to, um, for the ethics complaint that she, so we had to hire our own attorney for that.
I don't know.
And Matt, being the nice guy that he was, did it pro bono.
You know, I didn't understand that, actually. Why, because we were doing our duty and we didn't intentionally write the law. In fact, it was determined that we didn't. But why we even had to just, just, come up with some way to cope? Okay, I think I'll move on.
Okay, B three eleven. Your turn. This is a brand new one.
All the words are in it. It's red.
Are you gonna read this, Pam? Oh, am I, am I you?
Yes.
Okay. Selection of auditor. The board shall ensure annual audits made each year of the district's accounts and fiscal affairs. The board shall give the executive director and finance officer authority to contract an approved governmental auditing firm. The board will approve final selection of the auditing firm.
This was the one we switched around. Everything was backwards.
Yeah. And, I, yeah, number one was, "The board will approve final selection," and, yeah, yeah.
So, we switched it around.
So, we could... So we could.
So the order was.
Backwards. It was like, you'll approve and then you'll do backwards, go backwards, and then you're gonna go.
Looks good, okay. You guys gave me the big long one, okay. We'll do it section by section, how's that sound? Okay. Board commissioners, board committees. Appointment of committees and subcommittees. The Sensa Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners may appoint committees and subcommittees to transit district business as delegated by.
Transact.
Yes, was it?
Transact.
Transit. Transit must be transact.
Transact.
Business. Yeah, to transact districts' business as delegated by the VOC. Committees may appoint subcommittees with the approval of VOC. Okay? Membership. The chair of the VOC shall appoint members to serve on committees. The chair may choose to seek nominations for appointments or may directly appoint new members to a committee. Membership may be made up of both board commissioners and non-board members. There is no limit to the number of members per committee. However, no committee or subcommittee may be made up of more than three board commissioners so as not to constitute a forum for the VOC purposes per statutory requirements. The exception to this rule is budget committee. Per statutory requirements, the budget committee is required to consist of all seven commissioners and an equal number of citizen members. O R S two nine four point four one four. Operations of committees and subcommittees. The order of business at the beginning of formation at each committee or subcommittee, and again, at the beginning of each fiscal year, fiscal year, shall be election of chair, election of vice chair, establishment of the minutes taken typically, typically staff, and establishment of the purpose and goals of the committee.
Well, we have a blueprint, can I interrupt here?
Yeah.
We have, uh, there is some kind of language about committees, isn't there, or about different, all the different types of committees we have. A little, it's almost a little mini job description.
Next page.
That's a, it's on the next page.
Okay, good.
Each committee and subcommittee shall report on its activities to the VOC on a regular basis or as designated by the VOC. Committees and subcommittees can review material and provide recommendations for action by the district, but only the VOC can authorize an action. All VOC committees and subcommittees are subject to application open, to applicable open meeting laws. Standing committees and the board of commissioners. The following committees will last in perpetuity.
Perdido.
Per, 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 per.
Ever and ever.
Whatever, ever.
Sounds like a will or something.
Executive Director Evaluation and Compensation Committee. This committee convenes on an annual basis. The board chair will assign members and the assistant, and the executive assistant will assist the committee with the evaluation process.
Did you want that in there?
Yes. Is that, is that good?
Just second.
Okay. We changed it to the executive assistant from HR.
Yeah.
Why is that?
S D A O suggests HR not involved.
Okay.
Too close to employees. I think, but they suggested not HR.
It never has been in the past.
That was, and according, according to Kathy Kleizak before, when she was here, she was, she never had HR. And the only reason in my mind that we've had Sue in the past is Sue came to me as the board chair. It's time to do Jeff's evaluation. I assume that's how they had been doing it. Sue has always done it that way. But S D A O suggests HR not be involved.
So is anything, is this not, maybe it's not the right place? That all the employees are submit, um, an evaluation rather than a selected.
That's one reason we're changing things and that's gonna be on our agenda. One of our agenda items, I'm, I'm gonna send out everybody, yes, the evaluation.
So where does that go?
Oh, well, not in here.
Okay.
Not in this part. We don't need it in here.
Where does it go? In general, how, outline how you.
It'll be how.
You have your meeting, the evaluation meeting. The determination should be made there.
Maybe the process we go through on that committee is, is where, where is that document?
It's not. I've never seen it, I'm just.
We, we have one.
Do we?
Absolutely.
We're.
We have one.
Are we doing it executive, or?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, but it doesn't, but it's not, doesn't say that every staff person, every employee gets any money.
Oh, we have to update it for that, but.
Now, are, are you, are you updating that? And it would be nice to have that document available upon request.
Yeah. In the past, it definitely said that, that every employee. Yeah.
It would be never a selection.
Sue always. That would be good to, it'd be good to know that.
Yeah.
They, they, all throughout the organization that they know.
Yeah.
That's the process.
That would be.
And is that the same? And then is it necessary for the board to know how staff, is you gotta do it annually or anything?
No.
I don't think so.
No, we don't have.
But it is, but there is a process.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the main thing.
Aren't staff, should the board have a policy about evaluation that outlines?
I don't think for the staff, but you know what? I think it'd be good for HR, for Sue, to tell it to review for us hours.
Executive directors, um, evaluation, which is what we're talking about right now.
Right.
Okay, and the executive commit, the committee. But before the committee meets, should the board, this committee, develop a policy on how that is going to be done? And what you want?
Yes.
And what you want.
I think that there is an existing, but it is being updated.
No, it, it's a committee, she hasn't seen this, and I said that there was a policy, I remember it. But I've never been involved in it anymore, so I, yeah. So, I'm just saying, how can I find that? And we could talk about it.
And we, we need to establish it, I think it should be included in the, in the packet. You know, here's what, what you go through. And, yeah, in here.
Oh, I think it should be a board policy.
For the executive director review, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, because I wanna talk about that at our next meeting, because we're getting close to the evaluation time.
Well, we would still have another meeting, though we would have to write a board policy today about what we want.
Let's.
What the, what the board wants the executive evaluation, the evaluation committee to do.
Right.
So, but can you find that? I go upstairs and look.
No, you don't, let's not do it. Let's wait and see how much time we have until the end of the day.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you two could just work on that and just get it ready for the next meeting, that'd be great.
Okay.
Now, do we need to, any changes need to be approved by the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be done at the meeting.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't mind us putting it together, the executive director evaluation procedure being put together, brought back to the board or approved.
You're, you're good with Mary.
Get a chance to.
We would not have another meeting.
Because I know what, I served on it last time, so I'm gonna take a critical look. And I also, you know, Debbie, we talked about how we wanted, she's told us anecdotally how she wants to make improvements on it, so I'll just be looking for those.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is, comes back to, you know, Guillermo was appointed to the evaluation committee, which I don't think he should serve, because he hasn't been here to know doubly squat about. That's why I wanted to, if I'm not here for meetings, well, he's missed.
But doesn't Debbie have the discretion to choose the, um, members of that committee?
I'm just, um, suggesting, if you're absent as much as Guillermo has been, you can't serve on a committee, you can't, because they're not prepared. They haven't read the material.
Okay, now, based on that, where we're not gonna get that, you know, we can't talk about that publicly in a, in a meeting, I don't think. It's gonna, we have named names and tell them, you know, no, I don't think you should be on that because, you know, you don't attend enough meetings. I think this is sort of something that is a discretion of the, um, chair to appoint people on the committee, and she does it in a rotating fashion.
I try to make sure that I'm appointing.
Oh, I understand that part.
And if you just, and I was hoping by appointing him.
No, it didn't work.
But now we're down to, if he's not on the committee, it's just me. Because Deanna was the other person on the committee.
Well, see, and I think you should use your discretionary.
No, and I'm going to appoint somebody else on that committee to take Deanna's place.
And then you got the little sticky wicket of Guillermo. And I think that without, and, and it is a discretionary thing, I would rather avoid a big giant oopla about getting him off of there. I think that Debbie should just, I should just revise her committee membership by appointing somebody else.
I can specifically ask Guillermo. Look, the evaluations are coming up. It's gonna be important that you attend each meeting that we have. Is that gonna be an issue? And if he says it's gonna be an issue, I can appoint somebody to take his place.
Okay, there you go, because actually that's, that is a better process.
And, and the right process.
Yeah, right. And I don't wanna go on record as, you know, being a name namer, which I did, which I just did just now. I, you know, I, I should say, an individual where there's a concern that that person will have enough time to fulfill those duties. Anyway, okay, okay.
So, Mary and I are gonna work on that. B, Transportation Advisory Committee. This seven-member committee provides recommendations to the board on transportation matters regarding seniors and those with disabilities and the general public, as well as operates as the district's Special Transportation Fund Grant Committee and it is governed, governed by its own bylaws. Committee members must apply for a position that is submitted to the board for final approv, approval. Terms are staggered.
Okay, there, Mary, do you see where you might have found, you might have deleted some text accidentally? In that previous paragraph?
As well as operating as the district's Special Transportation Fund Grant Committee, period. It is governed, yeah, I just took it as two words out.
Okay.
Yeah, it is governed by its own bylaws. Committee members must apply for, for a, for a position. That shouldn't really say on the committee, but. Committee members must apply for, for a position. It's not a good sentence. Candidates. Candidate must apply for a position that is submitted to the board for final approval. Okay.
So this is publicly announced exactly like for the board? So, and, and as you see then.
I'm sorry, where is it?
The, on B.
In the red area of B.
Should say candidates must apply for a position on the committee.
On B?
On B, red, in the red, B.
How about that has been submitted?
Mm-hmm. That, yes, that had, that have been submitted. Candidates must apply for a position on the committee. On committee, period.
But it's not plural, so you don't. You say has been, not had.
Candidates must apply for a position on the committee, period.
Applications must be submitted.
Oh.
Will be submitted to the board for final approval, that's, that's, does that sound better?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Terms are staggered. Good. Good. Budget Committee. This seven-member committee convenes on an annual basis to review and approve recommendations to the board that the budget should be approved. Committee members must apply for a position which is submitted to the board for final approver, approval. Terms are staggered.
And I'm gonna do the same thing there, I'm gonna change the committee members to candidates must apply for a position.
Wait a minute, where is, did I read?
That's the last, that's the last, last line of C. Candidates instead of committee members must apply for, for a position which.
Are submitted to. Is, are?
Period, I'm gonna do a period.
Candidates must apply for, for a position.
Period, and then applications are submitted, just like the other one.
Okay.
Will be submitted to the board for final approval. Okay.
Right. Terms are staggered. Board Policy Committee provides recommendations to the board regard, regarding board policies. It consists of board members appointed by the board chair, appointed board members, as well as executive director and exec, and executive assistant.
Wait a minute, this is real bad here.
Provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies. It consists of board members appointed by the board chair.
Period.
Period.
And then the rest of it is garbage?
Yeah.
I have no idea where that came from.
Sorry. However.
Doesn't seem, let me, let me just read this by myself here for a second.
So is the executive director and the executive assistant on this committee? That's what it says.
Yeah, we just said we're eliminating that line.
That comes.
Yeah, that's the one we're eliminating.
Okay.
So he, Jeff put this in.
Well, moment, board members as well as executive director, the executive assistant.
Of course you did.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I get it.
Okay.
So, I would start it out with, instead of provides, I would say, okay, here's D, Board Policy Committee. Board Policy Committee.
Consists of board members appointed by the board chair.
You're taking up the board's.
Who provides recommendations?
We do.
Okay, so the board. Board, VOC provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies.
The committee.
Board Policy Committee. The, let's just do it that way, the Board Policy Committee provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies. It consists of board members appointed by the board chair. Okay, that's it, huh?
But you don't put that the board person.
Well, you could just say that at the end.
Policies.
Board of Commissioners approve all board policies.
Submitted to the board.
For approval.
For approval.
Okay.
Just a second. Can you read that out to me again? Because I, you know, you have it, Mary, but if we don't have it in our notes, how do we double check your work?
Right, so just like you just wrote something in the beginning here, you changed it, and I, I didn't get that right.
Yeah, okay.
So read your part and then I'll read mine.
All right, okay.
Okay.
The Board Policy Committee provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies. provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies. Got it? Want me to read it off again?
Nope.
Okay. Instead of it, I would say the Board Policy Committee consists of.
Are appointed.
Or, or, okay, then you read it to me. You read your, your changes. The Board Policy Committee.
Policies are, all I wrote down is policies are submitted to the board for final approval.
Policies are submitted to the board. Wait a minute, what is, what's the last thing? Say that word sense to me again.
Policies are submitted to the board for final approval.
Okay, there you go. Too much. Good.
Is the, um, sentence, um, it consists of board members appointed by the board chair.
By the board, that was the first one.
No, the first one is the Board Policy Committee provides recommendations to the board regarding board policies.
And then the second sentence is, the Board Policy Committee consists of board members appointed by the board chair, period.
Right.
And then the last sentence is, policies are submitted to the board for final approval. Got it? Okay? Okay, got it? Okay.
Ad-hoc Committees. The Board of Commissioners may establish as many ad hoc committees and subcommittees as it means necessary to fulfill the needs of the district.
Is there an example of an ad hoc that, since you've been here?
No.
Well, you know, there might end up being one. Let's say we have an event. And, you know, we're gonna, we got an ad hoc committee that's a one-off. You just, it's convened only for a specific purpose, and then it is, uh, disbanding.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just wondered if, you know, I don't think, I don't think we've ever, you know, had one. But we might need one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just wondered if.
Maybe, because we don't have enough work to do.
They'd be handy, anyway. It would be handy.
Non-BOC Committees and Subcommittees. A. The Executive Director may establish committees and subcommittees independently from the Board of Commissioners. These are non-Board of Commissioner Committees and are developed and guided under the direction of the Executive Director with the foreknowledge of the VOC. Foreknowledge, so he needs to let the board know first.
Why would you have this?
Why? I don't know.
Why would you have him on board? What's the point of having a board?
Um, he could, he or she could say, I want a staff committee. I wanna convene a, a committee of staff members to plan the Christmas party. I don't know.
I don't know when is what Amber replied.
It's, you know, and the thing is.
Cause it's.
Well, it worries me, man. If you have a director who is not, who is kind and aware of your speech and action. I wouldn't want these non-BOC Committees to be.
But look at the last sentence, with the foreknowledge of the VOC.
It, it doesn't make sense why we'd have this. Because when you're rendering the Board of Commissioners, they're useless.
Kind of, yeah.
And insulting.
I, I don't think there's been a committee here that, and, and, since I've worked, the only committee is, a Christmas party committee maybe.
Well, here's the deal, if, if you, if you don't have this, and then we have to, um, then we find some reason why we need it, then we'd have to add it on. If it's already added on, and we, and we, we don't have, doesn't mean you have to use it. And I don't think it's really a threat, because I, I think that the VOC wouldn't have to give a seal of approval on it anyway. So, it's just there, it just sits there.
Well, what's a subcommittee?
Well, I don't know, maybe it's something who is gonna come up for that.
So is, what I'm asking is, would it be covered under sub, subcommittee, whatever that means? Actually, I don't understand what a subcommittee is. We, we're not a hundred feet.
Well, it'd be somebody that, well, we're looking at, let's say, strategic planning of some kind, or, no, let's see, new routes. New routes, we got a new route committee, and under that committee, the, the subcommittee is gonna do Warrington.
Yep.
Period.
So you have a route committee that's.
Committee in general.
And Craig will tell us about it.
Yep, and, and.
And they're working on it.
They're gonna have a subcommittee that takes care of Warrington, and a somebody, committee that takes care of.
Napa.
And we're not, we're not in on this, because Craig's working on it.
And Craig's working on it, but we have, he has to get our permission, he, or at least let us know.
I kinda like this.
I, yeah.
But isn't that out of our jurisdiction that's under Jennifer, who changed the rules?
What?
No, that's, I mean.
He's just saying that he can go and do, make some committees that, that aren't, and as long as they pass muster for us, then he can do those into there, all right?
Yeah.
So, he can't do anything without running it past us.
Correct.
So that takes care of him doing something without our approval.
And he can have, so, so he can actually have people from the public on that committee too. On those committees.
That.
Okay. B.
So we're keeping all A, B, C, D, E?
Well, we only got to A.
Oh.
We're keeping A so far.
Okay.
Okay, B. Non-BOC Committees and Subcommittees may or may not contain members of the VOC or the public. Okay?
It's freezing in here, I think it's warm.
So if we're gonna allow, if we're gonna allow A, I would say we allow B.
It's almost a bit of a part of it.
Yeah.
But it's just what it's, um, it's just putting a little more spin on it.
Okay. C, Non-BOC Committees and Subcommittees report directly to the Executive Director. The Executive Director has the responsibility of reporting the activities of non-BOC Committees to the, to the VOC. So, he's got these committees out there, looking over new routes, and then he comes back and reports to us what they've found. There you go. D. Non-BOC Committees and Subcommittees are considered internal district meetings and may not be subject to state or federal open law. May.
May not means, you know, might not be.
Correct.
We should say are not, because they are not. And would never be.
Because, because I have a note here, that Mary would check, uh, about these subcommittees.
Right.
In terms of meeting laws.
You mean, I was supposed to check, I thought that had to do with another, is that on the, on this, on this one?
No, it's on D. Non-B, yeah, six.
Okay.
That's what I have here.
So.
But you would check whether there's. Oh, they are considered. Wait a minute, is they're considered, yes, whether they're, you have to have a public notice.
Yeah, they, this kind of meeting would not.
So.
They're not bringing anything to the board.
Replace may with are, are not.
Okay.
Are not.
Okay, yeah, because they're, they're not, this committee will not be bringing anything to the board directly that they're making a decision on. Jeff would be bringing it, she, if he, from this committee.
Correct.
Jeff will be bringing it, Jeff.
Can you, uh?
A director would be bringing it. Sorry. The director would bring it to a board meeting, and then it would be voted on. You wouldn't be listening to a subcommittee. You would be, you could be. A subcommittee could present it at the board meeting. So the reason this meeting is a public meeting is because you, us directly here, you directly here are formulating something that you're gonna bring to the board, and they're gonna make a decision on. Okay? Jeff would bring this.
Craig would bring it.
Cut, start it. Craig.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Sorry, I'm really sorry.
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 Standing, non-BOC Committees. Um, Safety and Security Committee made up of only employees to regularly evaluate and recommend policies regarding the safety and security of the district and its employees.
But this, I thought HR was, was somebody, anyway, I thought HR was. No?
They might.
The Safety Committee is not HR. The Safety Committee of Employees.
Who, who does?
She may, she may be running it, but it is of the employees.
But it's what, of the employees?
Yeah, it's an employee committee, made of employees.
Okay. So why is it under Board Committees? I don't understand.
It's a standing, non-BOC, you see, non-BOC.
Oh, okay.
This is a part of E.
Okay, okay.
Okay? And, and I've never heard of it called Security. Where'd that come from? It's really the Safety Committee.
Safety Committee, period. Yeah, why don't you check on that and see if, if, if we could delete and Security?
Does that mean cybersecurity?
I'm going to, yeah.
It does, it'd make more sense.
We don't have a Security meeting, is that?
So you don't have cybersecurity? Meetings?
Cybersecurity meetings, we don't have a Cyber Committee. We have Safety Committee that is in, in regards of employee safety, and OSHA is, is basically all the OSHA requirements for safety for employees.
But is there a, a review of cybersecurity for the?
We have a, a company that, that takes care of our cybersecurity.
I focus.
Oh, okay, yeah, so anytime you have any problem with a security question or any problem that you feel like, yes, day before, yes, Friday, I had, I got an email. It was an email, it was a notice that came up, and I'd never seen anything like it before, and it had a red ball on it, and said, your security is in jeopardy. I'm like, huh, yeah, I'm not falling for that. So I called him up, and I called him, I sent him, I sent him a note, sent him a message, and within ten minutes, he was back and said, that is ours, you may accept it. It is a new, a new service that we have, because I'd never seen it before.
Well, let me just ask a question in general, which has bothered me, is that there are public entities within the country that have been invaded, you know, and that their programs have been shut down for.
Sure.
The district, it would be.
Sure.
That you couldn't.
Operate.
Operate. So, do they do a monthly review or?
Yes.
Of the security?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, I think they do, like, probably weekly, weekly, like on Friday or, you know, when we're not, when we're not on. You know, when we're not on, and you can tell when you come back that things have been changed, your computer, you come back and your computer's off because they've had the update, and that makes sure the computer is shut off. So they, there can, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have Craig really talk to them and have a review of what they do.
Really, you don't know?
Yeah, no, you don't. So I, I'll put that on here.
You were. So I had an email this morning.
Pardon me?
I had an email this morning that evidently August two thousand twenty-three, I authorized the payment of an invoice. And they wanted it paid now. And it went to Kelly and Craig, and then they sent it. It was, and I was gonna go back after, because my email address here is a little bit different than everybody else's. And I noticed Craig, on his presentation, I just noticed it the other day, he has my email on there wrong. So I'm not getting.
Oh.
That's why I'm not getting those emails like Charles is getting. Because my email is just a little bit different than everybody else's.
He's trying to get it, right.
And I was gonna go back and see, because I didn't get this email, even though on one of a, because of the thread. Supposedly I sent an email. I was gonna go back and look at that email address that it was sent from. But I never authorized a payment on this one invoice that we were wanting.
Wow.
It was a scam. We decided, it'd be Craig and, and Kelly. Anyway, back to this Safety and Security Committee. Do you remember, and I, I don't think you guys had it for very long, but on weekends, when you were open here on weekends, you had a security guy out here. Is that where the Safety and Security? You, you have not, no, you have nothing to do with that, okay?
Oh, I know. Um, Marcelo was here, reception. Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Sorry, the only way I can get to three, three directors.
Not far away. Terrifying. So when Marcelo was here, she was having problems with the public, and so she wanted protection. So maybe that's where the security came in. I think he put the glass.
Yeah.
After that.
But not, but not in this.
I'll also check on it, but I think we're just, this is called the.
Safety Committee.
Yeah, I don't wanna give it, I just don't want there to be something, assumption that they're doing things. And I guess they, they do, I mean, well, in some places, like, yeah, I mean, they, they are doing things about security. It's just that, I don't know, I don't know.
Check it out and see what you just, I'm, I'm kinda good with either way.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I'm, that is to me, because.
No, no, I mean the title. I know about it. I'm not talking about security.
I mean, it's on you the one, my hips were on a timing limit. I'm sorry, but, you know.
Do you want a comfortable chair?
Unless it's, unless it's really some opportunity to use policies here, we gotta stick with it, okay?
And it doesn't really matter unless it's safety and security.
Sorry, I'll check.
I'm just running it out of speed.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I'll, I'm gonna update this statement about what they do, okay?
Okay.
The Safety Committee, I'll be, I'll be more concise, okay?
Cause we should.
Of what their limitations are, and then I'll, I'll talk to Craig about our cybersecurity and what we have, and how to make a presentation.
You know, these are always good things to pop into our meetings due for continuous education.
Absolutely. Yeah, you, you should have a report once a year. It would be nice to have a side of security.
I mean, just cause somebody wanna take advantage.
Yeah.
Different factors.
Yes, yes, okay. Do you want a more comfortable chair? A bigger chair?
I'm just gonna stand up.
Okay, all right.
Board of Commissioners, guys for public officials. Um, your turn.
Okay, there was one thing I know, there's nothing about, um, work sessions in here. Uh, one, that we do them, and two, that the public have to have public notice. So somewhere.
Are you saying in the guy for public officials, there's nothing that talks about work session, in that guy?
In this, isn't that where we go?
No.
No?
Okay, are, are you talking about, we don't do any types of meetings we can have?
I just want somewhere that, one, a work session, we can have them, and two, they need public notice.
I think it is.
It's, it, we're, look in your public.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and we can have work sessions, I mean, that's.
But she's saying that if you don't notice.
Yeah, but look in your public, look in your public notice, your public meetings booklet that's in your three-ring binder.
Okay, 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 in this discussion, okay.
Okay.
Are we gonna get a revised three-ring binder?
Yes, well, it's gonna be updated, not revised.
What, what do you, are you updating? When do you think we're gonna have that?
When we're done here.
I have to get down with this, because we have to do this first.
You know, like, uh, like, probably like before summer.
Hopefully.
Well, maybe.
Maybe, we're, we're. Maybe, well, maybe, yeah.
Well, because a board meeting, I mean, a budget, you have budget.
Oh, that's right.
Tomorrow, we have a valuation, and today is March, so we have April, May, and then June, so we have eight weeks.
It could probably could be the, you know, after July, July.
July, because you're deciding on that.
Yeah. No, but that's a good thing, though, it's gonna be great, and we're gonna have that.
Oh, yeah.
No, but not a lot of things that change.
Does I need to look at mine?
I wish, there's, there's not a lot of things that will change, because the, the, what's in that is all, um, state and like, public meetings law, public, you know, uh, what do you call it, um?
Public.
Robert's Rules, it's stuff that goes to the end of time, you know, Robert's Rules is. How mu- how old? Fifty, a hundred years old?
A hundred years old.
A hundred years old?
Attorney General's Public Breakfast Meeting, some that they get updated every once in a while, and she has given us. ORS has stayed the same, or you can go over the Ethics Law, and I just. I just need to go through it again.
This is changing.
Yeah, right.
So.
We're doing great work here.
Generally the same, however, some things have changed, and, and.
Well, see, in, this is on my table of contents, this is where it says, Board Policies Draft.
Oh, yeah.
And they never, no, no.
And, you know, we're, we don't, I, we don't anticipate anybody, any new board members, you know, not.
Not for another year.
For a while, but, boy, it'll be sure great to, uh, have our orientation and the three-ring binder, our revised orientation and improved, and the binder, all nice and tidy for the newcomers.
And then I'm gonna give you guys a test after you get mine.
I'm ready, I am gonna be ready, okay.
Okay, your turn.
I have a timer.
I'm gonna shoot you in the last.
Oh, boy, slapped around by the area.
No, I just wanted to test, like, what page is.
A pop quiz.
Pop quiz.
If one of the board meetings.
And, but if you get it right, there's gotta be a little incentive.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, candy.
No, no, no. First, get it, yeah.
We're gonna get a candy.
To the board.
Oh, no.
Okay, um, Board, uh, Guide for Public Officials. Policy, a copy of a Guide for Public Officials explaining provisions of the law will be included in the new Board Member Orientation Book, or can be obtained via the Oregon Government Ethics Web Commission website, or through the Board's Secretary. B four oh three.
Oh, I'm not, okay, fine.
Wow, got it, I, I got it.
Okay, B four oh three, and is that true, or through the Board's Secretary? You mean the, the Board?
Executive.
Let's change that to.
We don't like secretary.
Executive Assistant, okay. Thank you, okay, will we do the next one, since one of the other ones is so short?
I love this one.
If you want to.
I love this one, this is a good policy, alright.
Okay, Public Meetings. Purpose, to lay out the policies by which the district will comply with the Oregon Public Meetings Law, and to provide the rules that the district will follow in regards to citizen participation and public comment. The district is committed to complying with the requirements as well as the spirit of, is that of?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, then no comma, as well as the spirit of the law, and values public particip, wait a minute, what is this? And values public participation at its meet, public meetings.
That's weird.
That doesn't sound right. The district is committed to complying with the requirements, comma, as well as the spirit of the law, and the values of public participation at its public meetings, sorry, let me read that one more time. The district is committed to complying with the requirements, comma, as well as the spirit of the law, comma, and the values of public participation at its public meetings.
Does that make more sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Policy, SETD will comply with the Oregon Public Meetings Law, which can be found in its entirety in ORS, blah, 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 where the law is open to local interpretation. The district will establish its own rules. Those local rules are laid out below. Application, the policy applies to all meetings that occur by or under the direction of the District Board of Commissioners. This includes the District Board of Commissioners' monthly meetings, work sessions, special meetings, as well as meetings of the Board's subcommittees. Definition. One, public meetings, the convening of any government body for which a quorum is required to make or deliberate toward a decision on the matter, or a subcommittee that deliberates towards a recommendation to the Board or to gather information. Decisions must be made in public and secret ballots are appropriated. Procedure, one, quorum for the District Board of Commissioners, a quorum is the presence of four of the seven Commissioners. Two, voting, except as otherwise provided by law, and except where the SETD directs or acts to the contrary, Alistair's standard of code of conduct shall govern our parliamentary processes of this public body. See attachment A.
You did attach one A. Yes, you did, yes, you did, it's here.
Brief, should we read attachment A now?
No.
Okay.
It's too many pages, or what this is, you can read about this, okay, this from SDAO, I got this, um, from other districts that I looked at, where they say it's important that you state, if you're gonna use Robert's Rules, or if you can, there's three different resources for parliamentary procedure, they recommend this one, this is used by most over Robert's Rules.
Okay.
Because it's easier to read, it's easier, and it's, and this was, and they recommend you state that to the public, this is, this is the, this is who we're gonna.
So they know what we're working.
Yeah, so you, they know what we're gonna base, what, what reference we're gonna go to in our parliamentary procedure.
So we're not using Robert's Rules?
Nope.
Okay, so that has to be changed.
Yeah, right, but I just.
It's just that elsewhere, it's in your past.
In your past, it's in your, it was in your orientation, okay, but I just changed this, I mean, we're just doing this, so I'll, I'll send you, hurry, hurry, okay, I'll send you.
And what it, what, um.
This is all too.
How big of a document is that?
It's a book.
Standard of Code, so.
It's a full book, and we're.
Giant book?
A full book, just like Robert's Rules is a full, full book. Uh, but in here, this attachment has most of the things that.
My script.
Yeah, that, that.
Pertaining to meetings.
Yes.
Oh, pertaining to us, archives. Or is it if we have that available at all meetings?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Alright, number three, electronic correspondence. Meetings accomplished by telephone conference calls or other electronic means may constitute a public meeting, meeting. In such cases, the district will provide notice as well as a location where the public may listen or to observe the meeting. Four, meeting locations, the District Board will hold all of its public meetings within the jurisdictional boundaries of the district, namely, within the boundaries of Clatsen County. Five, notice, notice, SETD will provide a minimum of five days prior notice of meeting time. Is that what we kind of call, usually call a week?
That's what's required, we, I do, try to do a week, seven, I try to do seven days.
Okay, so this is the minimum, okay.
But, but, but we wanna leave it at five, okay.
So do you say business days or just?
Days.
You're not saying business?
No. Weekends count.
Okay.
Provide a minimum of five days' public notice of time, place, and agenda for any regular or special meeting. For emergency meetings, SETD will provide as much public notice as possible, depending upon the unique circumstances of the particular emergency. Say it loud. Okay. Six, executive sessions, the district will comply with ORS, blah, 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 in regards to the use of executive sessions when appropriate and requested by the Board. SETD will provide notice of such sessions as explained above under the Notice section. Seven, exemptions, meetings that occur for a purpose other than deliberating about or citing upon an action of the district are not considered public meetings, and are not required to follow the requirements of the Oregon Public Meetings Law. Eight, public comment, the District Board will provide at least one opportunity to receive comments by the public at each of its regular scheduled public meetings and subcommittee meetings. At special meetings such as work sessions, the district may provide opportunities for public comment at the discretion of the Board. The public will be allowed a total of three minutes per person to provide their comments, unless otherwise determined by the Board. Nine, media, representatives of the media are welcome at all public meetings of SETD, including executive sessions, including executive sessions. However, the media cannot report or disclose any information that is discussed within an executive session unless it is outside the scope of the purpose of the executive session. Media are excluded from certain types of executive sessions, such as strategy discussions about labor negotiations and consultations with a lawyer regarding an issue where the media is a party. Ten, minutes, the minutes from the district's public meetings will be made available within a reasonable time after each meeting. Written minutes are not a complete dictation, but will provide members present, member, will provide members present all notions, all motions, proposals, resolutions, orders, ordinances, and measures proposed, the results of any votes by name, the substance of discussion, discussions, and a reference to any document discussed at the meeting.
Full stop.
Oh.
Wait a minute.
Oh, and here's the attachment, right?
Yeah.
Do we need to approve this stuff?
Oh, yeah, see, three of three ended up being a blank piece of paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, but this is, this is what it is, the Sturgis thing.
Uh-huh.
Do we need to re-heal it?
I don't think so, man, it's her book, we're not gonna, I mean, it goes through the, you can just read the titles of each of the, you wanna just do that for the record?
Okay, are we discussing this, or is it good?
I just asked if she'd just read the, the titles, you know.
No, I'm asking about what she just read.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, are we approving that?
Uh, I have a few questions here.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. On number nine, um, media are excluded when discussion of real estate.
Yeah, real estate, mm-hmm.
Oh, that's right, and it is.
Okay, so, and then I thought that a work session, work sessions I've seen in other jurisdictions, the public cannot ask questions, as part of a work session, and that you could just go back and forth and get work done.
Up to the discretion.
Because usually, what you discuss in a work session will eventually go to the board meeting.
Well, it says here in number eight.
Oh, I know what it says, I'm, I'm just saying that usually, what I see, there's no, uh, public comment in a work session.
Well, maybe that having the discretion would open it up if in case we wanted to, so I guess it didn't be, it's not explicit, it didn't say that they can't, but they're just saying that they can't, so maybe at the beginning of each meeting, you'll say that, you know, would be, there are no public comments to the.
And this says that, this says, such as words, the district may provide, so it's up to the district.
So we could not, we could, if it was stated at the beginning of a meeting, we could say, we're not gonna take, this is a work session, and we're not gonna take public comment.
That's what I would suggest, so you can get your work done.
So that's just something that.
That's just the chair's role, yeah.
Oh, you wouldn't put that down?
At a special meeting, such as, such as a work session, in this policy, the district may provide oppo, because there may be work sessions where you want feedback, you want public comment, there could definitely be that time.
Oh, so I see what you're saying.
It may.
So each meeting?
Yes, 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 I think it.
That kind of implies that it, that you don't have it, but then it says, but, you know, that fills and says, it might, it is at its discretion.
Okay.
Did it really good. Done, done?
I thought, um, okay, we'll comply, I was going behind you too. Okay, I'll take some.
Okay. Okay. Who's gonna do the, so we're just, are we gonna just read the titles on this Sturgis thing? Or not?
You're gonna, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I have a note here from question five, and this was a while ago, so the executive sessions, blah, blah, ORS, ORS, blah, blah, and I have, Mary will check, use of the executive sessions.
Okay, which, which number are we on?
Five.
Number six.
Are you in public meetings?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so don't use your old name.
I'm just, I'm a comment.
Okay.
So number six, executive sessions?
Yeah.
What's the question that the district will, I, I don't know, if I look at this.
I guess when appropriate probably would be.
Could let you read it as you think it should read.
What you can use it for, oh, wait, I'm not sure where I put, check, Mary will check.
Let me, number six on this page, the district will comply with ORS one nine two six six O, is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay, in regards to the use of executive sessions, when appropriate and requested by the Board, SETD will provide notice of such sessions as explained above under the notice section.
I mean, doesn't, I thought executive sessions were limited to the topics, certain topics.
And that's under ORS one nine two.
And that's, and they're lit, yeah, they're under one nine two six six O, of what you can, uh, have an executive session for.
Okay.
So if we're complying with one nine two six six O, then, and we have to comply with an executive session, you can't pull, you can't say, we're gonna have an executive session to discuss safety and security, or.
Well, it's, then it's not, not really appropriate to be according to the ORS. So the phrase, when appropriate, should be eliminated, because the ORS should be state, have stated.
In regards to the use of executive sessions, when appropriate and requested by the Board, well, it is, I think that word is in there, because you're gonna evaluate, should this be executive session, should it not be executive session? Does this discussion that we're having with the executive director about getting a new car fit into this, or is that a wage thing, and would, you know, would fit in executive session, but it's something about a benefit, would not fit in there? Is this an example? So you do?
Where applicable, I think, when applicable.
Okay.
Appropriate, that's what I prefer.
You applicable, would sound better.
Yeah, because you're referring back to the ORS, or maybe this is.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
In case you have somebody who's running around, so to speak.
Got any more on that one?
No.
Okay. Okay, Pam, your turn. So we're not gonna, we're skipping past the Sturgis stuff.
Yeah.
And we're, now we're on seven oh four, seven oh four pound, turn.
Twenty.
Okay. Board of Commissioners' Executive Director Evaluation Policy, the executive director shall receive an annual performance evaluation by a committee of the Board of Commissioners. The committee will report its findings, should be, um, to the Board. Board will vote to approve the annual evaluation, and any. and any changes to pay or other compensation. At a minimum, the evaluation committee will consider, one, ability to cooperate with the board, staff, community members, and other local governments. Two, communication skills. Three, leadership attributes. Four, work habits. Five, use of district resources. Emphasis on operational and fiscal efficiencies. Six, performance made against strategic goals approved by the board. Seven, goals established in the executive director's previous performance evaluation. Eight, long-range fiscal planning and management. Nine, development and maintain good relations with the community. Now. Um, Tracy had asked, and I don't know if it's in here, was implicit, to how, how he has met the goals of that year.
Those goals established in the executive director's previous performance evaluation.
Number seven.
Okay.
And it's, they will consider, the committee will consider.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
You have a question, Mary, I see on your things.
Yeah, it's under, it should be worded but differently than that. Just goals, it should say. The accomplishment, the completion of
Goals, because I think that's the way it's stated in the evaluation.
Consider goals.
What are your goals this year?
Okay.
I think that, I think it's good.
Looks good, I like the additions.
Executive Director action without policy, E seven oh five. Policy. The executive director in the absence of board policy shall attempt to contact the board chair. And if the board chair is unavailable, shall contact the vice chair for direction. If the board chair is unavailable and vice chair is unavailable, and immediate action is necessary, the executive director shall have the power and latitude to act. The executive director shall notify the board chair and vice chair as soon as possible of any action taken. The board chair or vice chair shall notify the board of any action taken. The board chair shall inform the board at their next meeting of any action and that may suggest. The board chair shall inform the board at their next meeting of any action that may suggest the need for additional board adopted policy. Sounds good to me. All we did is add an extra
Vice chair.
Vice chair, they're just so oversight, so the director can't say, I let it ring once and hung up. But they have another policy.
Have to contact.
Yeah.
Have to try and contact.
Do you like that last line in there too? Does something need to be added?
Do we need another policy?
Yeah.
So this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
All right.
Yes.
This, I just have, um, let's see, executive director evaluation. That he, she performed fiscal management according to the relevant government accounting statutes.
Correct.
Is that in there?
Other local government. No.
And, uh, and O, and O dot, um, statutes.
Is that supposed to be in there? The local, the local, it's L G something, L G local government.
There's G A T S B Y.
No, it's
Government Accounting.
Standard.
O G A S.
Procedures, anyway. I'll get it from, I have to get it from Kelly.
Governmental O dot.
I can shoot, I just want to train, anyway, I'll get it from Kelly. I'm sorry, no. Local government, but it's a local government, um, financial process.
Yeah. We forgot, we were talking about that.
Okay, that has to be added.
To what, where, where are we at?
Um, seven oh four.
I mean, where will it be added?
Seven oh four, huh?
Sorry, we're back a little bit.
We'll put it under
Fiscal planning and management according to local.
Now, this is, so you're looking at the board, I mean, at the executive director evaluation. Yeah, no, we have this in another policy.
Yeah.
Fiscal, we have another policy, fiscal that you comply with that. And I don't know which one.
It's one of the ones that we're on.
Why would we have their director evaluation?
Well, because sometimes it's not followed.
But I mean, why would we go to that detail?
Well, because then you have it, if the director goes, well, it's not in the evaluation.
What is it again that you're, you're concerned it needs?
I don't think it will do.
What would you call it, the, uh,
It's, uh,
whatever compliance?
Going in.
This isn't really going to be.
Could, hasn't the district been criticized? That there's some accounting procedures.
Yeah, but now that, but I'll, I'll, let me see if it's in another policy.
It's in another policy.
It would go, it would only place, I can see it goes, use of district resources with an emphasis on operational fiscal efficiencies. And that would be utilizing the, that, that local government. Yeah.
Okay, well, if you could just cite that, uh, that we could, uh
These are coming back to you again in the board meeting, so. Okay.
As specified in, and then the name of that document.
Yeah. And I'll
So we do eight oh seven audit.
Eight oh seven. Okay, I'll do this one. Uh, policy. One, the executive director will cooperate with the auditor designated by the V O C to accomplish the annual audit. Two, the executive director shall be responsible for filling, filing the audit report with the Office of the Secretary of State. Three, the V O C will receive the audit report directly from the auditors. Four, the executive director shall be responsible for correcting any deficiencies reported by the auditors. Five, the executive director will provide the Board of Commissioners with a plan to correct any deficiencies and report when they are completed. Anything else to add to that?
I swear we did one for the audit already, but this is oh, no, it was for the direct, executive director audit.
Audit.
It feels like we're just, very similar to this. Yeah, selection of auditor.
Selection of auditor.
Okay, so this one says the board challenger, this is a three eleven, and this is eight oh seven. And this puts the executive director. And this, so selection, board of directors, board of commissioners, selection of auditor. I don't know why we don't put this into one thing. Selection.
Well, because there is a big difference. And the big difference that I see is that you have to respond, he, he or she has to submit to the board.
Yeah.
And we want submitted stuff. And we have
Yeah, this is selection of, and this is
Yeah, it's kind of different.
It is, it is, it's just why they're so far apart.
They shouldn't be next to each other.
Yes, they should be next to each other.
Well, this does, you know, I think it does spell it out what the director is responsible for with the audit. And, you know, the accountability factor that all of this is, is, uh, you know, provided to us, the board of directors. So, does this look like it's passed everybody's approval?
I'm gonna ask for a five minute break.
Okay.
Good, we got one more to go. Okay, wanna hand it out?
If you so, if you so do that it is important.
What's the next one?
The Board of Commissioners Board Orientation, two oh one. Do you hand it out?
Yeah.
Well, got it.
Let's review it. Yes.
Let's take a five minute break.
We're not gonna ask her why she needs a five minute break. But I've seen a lot of squirming over there.
All right. Right, five minutes. Okay, and it'll give you time to get up and walk around a little bit.
That's true, I need to
I can get a comfy chair for you.
Yeah, it's just about the sitting down thing. These chairs are actually pretty comfortable.
Yeah, they are.
It's just that, you know,
Okay.
They got, something's got a ledge.
I'm gonna go get my salad.
Yeah, okay.
Um, can I?
Can I get some food for you?
What? You want some, water, a bottle of water?
Do you guys have a, a heating element? Do you have a small space heater? No, I'm just kidding.
No.
Feel this.
No, I'm freezing.
Oh, you're as cold as I am.
My hands are starting to turn blue.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting in my car and turning up the heat.
I apologize.
Well, it's not your fault.
Yeah, we should turn this off since we're taking a break.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mary, you're a wonder, we're we're so lucky to have you. My gosh. She does a gazillion things, doesn't she? Can't believe how well everybody works together here. I mean, I could believe it, but I'm just saying it's, sure is nice.
No, because there are boards.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try some more coffee here.
I didn't want to, but it's the only hot thing in the room.
Oh, we can pick up the sandwich and go.
Well, I'm gonna be going into the world of my husband's cooking, ha, ha, ha. After surgery, oh boy. Yep. I tried, tried, I've actually, the last couple of weeks, I've been trying to have him shadow me in the kitchen. But I know it's just sort of going in one ear and out the other.
Well, you can freeze some of these.
That's true, yeah. But then that has to, we're gonna have to figure out how to call him out.
Oh, I didn't realize that, oh my god, how low the skill level was.
I was gonna tell you, one of our vendors had his hip replaced. Five days later, he's in here walking around with a story.
Ooh, I love those stories.
Because he got out of, I was just leaving when he got out of the car. I said, how did you do? And he goes, five days. I'm up and about. I don't think he made it downstairs, his face is downstairs, him and his. And, but he did say that he had drove to the post office on day three to get the mail.
He must not be, he must not have a right hip. Because I can't, because that's the driving hip.
Oh, my, yeah. He said that, um, the ball, he said it looked like, because he saw pictures of it, looked like an animal and it just chewed the
Yeah, but the same line looks like oatmeal. Okay, let's not get gross. Some people are trying to eat.
I work in a house over twenty years.
Oh.
No, no, I'm a lab tech, no, no, I'm a scientist. My mom had a replacement, my mom had multiple sclerosis diagnosed when she was about fifty. So she, she looked to be eighty, but she had sat down really hard, fallen backwards. And, and, um, you know, she had a walker, and she, she didn't end up in a wheelchair long time, anyway. She felt like she broke something, but when she went to the doctor, they didn't see it, didn't see it, and he told her to walk and walk as, and walk as much as she can, so in her walker, she'd be walking on pain pills and stuff. It went on for almost a year, and I finally said, enough, we're done, just taking you to and do, you wanna strike your head and go to your toes and figure this out, because she's an egg, and he shows forty pounds. So what had happened was, it cracked the ball, not, not the ball, but the
Unhip?
Unhip, the connector. And this, by the time she had her surgery, it was up here. So the end rounded off, the outside edge was of the socket. And it was up like that.
Oh, and I know what that kind of means.
Yes. And that doctor that we got to cried. Makes you cry now, he cried, and he said, I cannot believe that you, it was still just kind of pain. But that no one could see it in the extra, it was, so she'd just been misdiagnosed and misdiagnosed, and this, and hadn't been and one doctor here in Astoria said he wanted to cut off her leg. So here's the socket, so we're just gonna cut that off. Uh huh, then you gotta, just think about what that would be like if you didn't have the top there. What you'd be end up with. You could ever stand or support your weight again. And when you did, it would be so painful, because your leg would move all the way up. It was, he really said that. So it was a real war to, to get her to
Yeah, you gotta be ready for to be an advocate.
So then, she had the surgery. She came out of surgery and never took another pain pill. She got up and walked, I mean, could use her walker again. But she said, it feels so much better. I don't need pain pills now, you know, I mean, it was, it was a, it was a miracle, so. It's just wonderful, wonderful that you can do that. And that she had the little, you know, micro, it wasn't a big which I hope you can have.
They're replacing that little devil.
Yeah, they just
They need, yep.
Can go in there small, her decision was very small. Wonderful. Are we ready to go back?
Sure.
I'm gonna turn that off, okay. Okay, so we're two oh one? Two oh one. So, there it is. We did pass this already? We'll wait till we go.
No, no.
Here we go.
Hello, there.
Okay, okay, we're back. Um, we did pass this already, but what I didn't notice before was on the other one, we had this here. And then there was, on my copies, there was another policy. And then this nice little table, so I didn't realize this nice little table went with this policy. So so, I don't know if the words are the different, we'll just, I'll read the policy.
This is the
Oh, yeah. Is the policy the same as what we passed, or do you need to change it a little bit?
Yeah, he's, he says two thousand thirteen at the top.
Okay.
Oh, you know what?
We pa, we passed this without this.
Let, yes, here it is, let me, let me, here it is.
So it's the same, it's the same.
No, it took out. The executive director shall make sure should say executive is
Your position.
Executive assistant shall ensure, but it shouldn't be, the executive director shall ensure that each member elect goes through the orientation process. As it, it should be the executive director.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, so that's the same.
Okay, so that's the same. So we passed that part, but we didn't pass the attachment part, okay? And so Mary and I worked on it a little bit the other day. And hopefully we got what we need. We've got two versions of them.
Notes on here.
All right, good. So, um, we'll have an introductory meeting. And the board chair will, and I think, I think the board chair should have something like welcoming, telling them how important it is to make every meeting, how important it is to go through the book, and some other important stuff. Staff does a press release. Email account is set up, financial orientation. And that should be done by the finance officer instead of director.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And that will be a two to three hour.
Do you, so, should you have to put financial director there as opposed to executive?
She's changing, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Um, and Um, and there'll be a. There'll be the tours of Astoria and Morenton Transit, cause he said it's not here anymore. A tour of operations, par, paratransit, mobility offices.
With a, with a one hour timeframe at least with each.
For each, okay.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be specified. So that way, every, all the minimum, of a minimum.
All the board members get to meet these people and see exactly what they do.
Spend some time in their office.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just go through it.
Yes.
But sit down and talk with what they do.
And talk with yours.
Yes.
Will there be a, a packet, a screen balance sheet, that sort of thing, in the orientation?
For the finance, there should be, there should, I would hope that Kelly would be able to do a financial, like John did with us. Okay, here's their financial, here's our financial report for the month prior or something.
It's specified down here.
Yeah.
In the book, that you're getting of, of what you're gonna receive in it as reference to the departments that you're gonna be going to. You know, of what we do here, cause you're, you're getting the policies, you're getting the two months, so, um, board minutes for.
Two months.
Six months, six months, sorry, yeah.
But it.
Financial reports for the past six months.
But it would help if you had a, like a dictionary of counting terms, counting terms.
Accounting. I've been asking. Um, we should, we could ask Kelly to have those available. I've asked her many times.
Oh.
It's, but was, you've asked her directly.
Right.
You've asked her in a meeting. But I still think she hasn't time yet.
And that, I think it's important to have it in here. Uh.
Uh huh.
Yeah, cause you don't, you may not know what you're reading when you look at the balance sheet and, yeah.
Well, each, she should have a packet that she provides.
I know, well, should is, uh.
Well, but I'm just saying, you know, it, cause you know, some people are not verbal only learners. They need to take something back with them that they can refer to, and I think that is something as important as financial. Should, she should have like a little primer, have a little, a little overview thing.
Well, no.
Books would include, or, or just, you know, just a, a stapled. Five, five pages or so, where people can always refer to it, you know, and, and, and one of those pages would give you the accounting terms.
Oh, it seems to be a little hard, uh, because.
Well, if she's been asked, I'm sure she'll be thereafter.
Well.
A reminder.
That isn't what we talked.
And actually, that's Craig's job, isn't it?
Okay. Um, and then our little ID badge, that gets to be done by staff. I think Stephanie said she does, can do those. And then our orientation book will include board member contact and committee lists. Organizational chart, list of employees, job descriptions. Policies. Minutes for the last six months, or six, past six months, financials for past six months. Current budget, prior year audit report. SDAO guide for elected officials. Contacts and resources.
I think, I'm gonna go back to the audit, I think there should be two, you should see two years of it.
You want two years, okay.
And I think the same as the budget, you should see two, it, it should be two years.
Okay.
Cause you have to have some comparison.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Are you, excuse me, um, Mary, are you in charge of putting all this stuff together? This is, I made this, a long time, I think in two thousand thirteen made this, honestly, and it, it should. Great, that's wonderful for you to, I really appreciate, you're gonna keep, keep that current stuff. But what I realized is that people, you know, give it, give it to the board member and, and you need somebody, that's what I want to do now, is add this. I wanna go through it with you.
Yes.
I wanna give you the orientation book, but I wanna go through everything that's in it, so that you can ask questions, but.
Yep.
So that you know who, what, when and where, and. And, and then you feel like you could ask more questions as you get into it, things like that. And then people can always just email you. Uh huh. So, okay, now, let's think here, I got sure about this, and then you, you know, it's an ongoing thing, you're the resource person for this stuff.
Mm-hmm. The Oregon Ethics Law Guide for Public Officials, ORS numbers. Oregon Public Records and Meeting Manual references, and Robert's Rules of Order. And what Mary and I talked about was that she would go over, like, do a little mini ethics class. Tell me if I get this wrong, she'd also do a little mini Oregon Public Records and Meeting Manual. Or, um, on what public meetings are, why they need to be, that type of thing. Um, go over the board policies, these are specific things. The SDAO Guide for Elected Officials, she'll touch on that, but that's something that they would go home and read, kinda, cause.
And that's a training, always, you know, every time we have a, a SDAO conference, they offer that. But you can get that in a video, and I think that, that, that would be really. We have a link, a page, it's got those links, it's awesome.
Yes. Yeah. You can, I, I did, I did do the, um, webinar they have on directory evaluations. But there's all kinds, all you have to do is Google SDAO and go to their library, and there's all kinds of webinars that you can watch. Um.
And the contact, under here, the contacts and resources, that's where I'll put all that.
Yeah.
That's what, that's usually on that page, how to contact SDAO, and where to look for.
Okay, so, did I hear all the ones that you were gonna specifically talk about?
Do we still have Robert's Rules of Order there, or the Sturgis? It's gonna be Sturgis.
Okay. Yeah, but along with it, Mary will go through every section, and, you know, some of it's gonna be, here, here's your board member contact and committee lists. Here's your SD, SETD organizational chart, employees, job descriptions, I don't think you need to go over those. They can read those at their own time.
But you have a organizational.
They're in here though. They're out here, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, it's in there.
So, so, basically, it's not gonna be, here, Kim, here's your book, let's take a tour.
That's what it was.
That's what it was.
So.
That's not gonna happen.
The new board members will spend.
And you know, I had with, um, Tam, Tamara, my orientation was with Tamara and Jeff. And you know, that's way overwhelming to have two people. In this, you're meeting them for the first time, and it's not even anything substantive, you know.
That, that's, I was handed the book. I think it was just me, yeah, it was just me and Kathy and Jeff, and he goes, here's your book, let's go for a ride. Yeah, that was it.
Yep.
Um. So, but I think by having a one day, and it might take a little longer as far as the tour of operations and, that might.
I'm wondering if that should be like two sessions, because, you know, the, the, to be able to have fifteen, twenty minutes with what?
That's right, but I think.
You got three, four people over there.
An hour, you're gonna have more than that, you're gonna have, you need an hour. You need to know what they do.
Well, then that's a lot, you know, maybe just break it up, find a way to, to make this have continuity with two chunks. I think the staff and operations, uh, part, the operations part, and the, the leadership team members, uh, visits. Maybe have on a separate day.
Well, I'm, what I'm thinking.
I'm gonna have a checkoff list of, of each department that you're gonna visit, and you're gonna set up an appointment.
Yeah.
You know, what I'm saying.
So you're, yeah, then they can be totally set, scheduled separately.
And then you can check it off. Oh yeah, could be, it could be.
There you go.
So, so one every day for five days, or it could be one, I'm sorry, split it up, right.
Oh, every week, yeah. Depend, because if you give somebody that has a job, they're not gonna be able to sit here two days, Thursday and Friday, to go through this. But I think, so I think those definitely by appointment, I think, I would hope the rest of it could be done in one day.
Yeah, but they seem, that makes sense. But let's see. After getting this redone and reorganized, let's just take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna separate again. The, the, uh, orientation with each of the department heads, and, and mechanic. You could, you need to go see how bus, what they do, what they, how, all the things they have to keep track of, all the requirements. That'd be cool, is also, it's like a required thing is take a route, and you need to run, you need to go the full route.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, you know, um, what do you call it, a round trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, right along. And, and, and what you should have somebody, me or somebody else that's experienced here with you.
Yeah.
You know, so you. And I think Jason, that would be a really excellent one for Jason, because he's the guy that does the, you know, customized.
The mobility part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, does that work?
Looks good, real good.
And I'm also, at least for some of it, every time we do this for new board members, so we've got the election coming up. In another year, next year will be, actually, hopefully it's still the same ones, that.
Is that in the spring?
Yeah, that's the spring. But that's in May, so. A year would be for now, a year from now.
So.
So whoever runs, even if everybody's reelected, if everybody that's on the board now runs for reelection and they're. I would still, cause I think that would also be a good, um, chance to see how this would roll out.
We test it out first.
Yes, and I also think all the old board members should be invited to review. Because I think every two years, it would not hurt the whole board to sit down and go through the whole thing.
They come in with a.
Or at least most of it.
Cause it'll bring up links.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Because if you don't look at these board policies very often, because something might not come up. You're gonna forget what's in there.
So you said every two years, the incumbents go through this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to bring your book in, and then we update it, take out the old, put in the new.
Mm-hmm.
Good. It's a biannual. Now, when is the, um, so timing wise, scheduling wise, for that, to make it be the most meaningful?
I think just before they take office.
Okay, so.
I would say before.
And when does that start, July one?
For the, for the meeting.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. To bring it to the, to bring, bring your books back, or to new employee or a.
New, new board member.
I mean, new board members, sorry. When's their first day on the job?
January, the first meeting in July.
Okay, so, that's plenty of time to be all ready, yeah. But, okay, in July, and so therefore, we don't have any budget meetings getting in the way. We don't have any, uh, you know, with strategic planning, do we have this particular, I would like it so it wouldn't butt up. Uh, a conflict with any of our other.
Others, important stuff, yeah.
Existing activities.
Strategic planning should be at the first of the year, normal year.
But when are we supposed to be doing it this, or are we doing it this?
We, we talked about it last meeting, but I don't.
End of the, late, late spring? I don't think it's a schedule.
I think you'll have to have it before the budget. Is it gonna be next meeting?
Let me look.
I, I have, I'm, I'd have to go upstairs and look at my minutes, or, yeah.
Okay, so the budget, the first budget meeting is.
I think you want to have it before the budget meeting. May twelve.
Number one is May second.
Or maybe.
So, it's gotta be in April for strategic planning. We've got, oh, we did, we did do it, we've got it on this, right after the SETD on April twenty fifth.
That's right.
So, we're not in conflict with budget or strategic planning if we do it in July, after the Fourth of July weekend.
So, I'm sorry.
For the orientation.
Okay, wait a minute.
So, are you talking about orientation for new board members?
Yes.
So, so who's gonna be a new board member?
Nobody. Well, not until next year, but when do we wanna do the orientation for new board, before they take office, or after they take office?
We're talking about the strategic plan.
Well, no, we're, we're kinda looking at all our schedule.
It's not something that we schedule activities, so we don't schedule the orientation.
If the, if the election's coming, we always, we, we would always take in new board members in July and have them sworn in. Right.
Cause they've just been elected.
Right.
And then they get their orientation after that.
After that, after they've been sworn in.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, it can't be before anyway.
No, no, you would, you would not do it.
And, you know, it's not gonna be, if they're gonna be, have, if they're gonna attend a meeting before they get an orientation, that's not gonna kill them.
No, you, they need to be sworn in.
Well, sworn in, yes, but the, the orientation, so if, okay, what's.
They need to be sworn in before they get their orientation, so that they are actually a board member.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And that would be July.
So, July, and we've got our meeting on the twenty fifth of July.
So it'd be after that.
And so they have to be, so they get sworn in then.
And they would.
And then anytime after that, so in August at some point.
But, but, if they would come and see me, and it doesn't have to be a board meeting. The orientation?
No, no, I'm just saying, they're sworn in July twenty fifth, so they can't, we can't do the orientation before then.
No.
So, now we're looking at the first week in, um, or, you know, since it's July twenty fifth, Thursday, July twenty fifth. Anytime after that, we can start doing those orientations.
Yeah. Don't you, don't, don't, but, at, at least.
Before the next meeting, and have it before August. Before the next meeting would be kinda cool.
So, that's what usually happens.
And so August twenty second would be the second, the next, the second.
And we want it to be a group meeting, so you're not having to do, except, a group meeting for everything except for meeting with the, um.
I don't need help with planning this. But, I'm, I'm confused why you're thinking of that, you need to set a date or anything.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just curious, just as to the timing of everything.
No, no, but you don't wanna do one person at a time. If you have three new members.
Oh.
If you have three new board members, and old board members want to come for review, you don't wanna do it three or four different times. Don't you wanna do all at one time? Like a work session.
Or, but then we, we're, but there's an advantage to doing it just one person.
You have to do an orientation pretty much one person at a time.
Okay.
Have to. I, I don't, I don't think it'd be fair, I don't think it'd be fair to not, so.
Well, you've got all of August, you know, before this, their second meeting, um, to, to do that. And you can.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it, I've done it so many times, I'm not sure that you think it's, I don't know, what do you, what do you think?
I think, we're just trying to nail down what we're doing, that's all. I think that you're, you're the one, we understand you're doing it, and we understand you know what to do. But we, I'm just trying to get a bead on, you know, when all this stuff's happening. So, you know, July twenty fifth is when you get.
Do you really wanna do three separate ones? Don't you wanna do it as a group, so we start, so they start working together as a team?
Are we talking about a new, new board member, or are we talking about updating the board information that they got?
New board, new board members.
Yes, I would wanna do it individually.
Would you?
I, I see the value of that, because people kinda get distracted with the group. Don't ask questions, get shuffled through, won't have, be able to sit down with Jason and Jennifer.
Well, now, that would be totally different, those, because they're gonna make appointments for each one of those at different times.
And they'll make an appointment with me.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I mean, I'll only see one at a time. So I can sit down and go, cause I couldn't, I guess I could go through the book and it, as a group, maybe that'd be okay. But, you know, I guess I did.
Because I'm looking, at, at what gave me the idea of doing this, was at the last county commission meeting. At their work session, they had the ethics talk with the whole group.
Mm-hmm. So there are.
And the finances, the same. And the finance is the same thing, so
Of the new, of the new commissioners?
No, of the whole group of commissioners. Those commissioners have been on, they've all been on at least three years.
Okay.
But then Kelly's gonna have to do the finance thing maybe three different times. So a lot of time out of per day. If it's a two to three hour finance thing. And John did the finance and while John did the two to three, those three hours.
Yeah. So we're, she's gonna have a it's gonna be the same. It's not, it would be an overview. I don't think, you, you're, you're not gonna give what, like what John gave us. I don't
I think that Kelly can take care of it in one hour for, you know, I, I, I mean
But I see your point, if you wanted to, um, if you think that they should be, um, grouped together, if there's if there is, I, I just don't kinda wanna cross that bridge and get there because I just don't think we're gonna have three people. I don't think we're gonna have to worry about it. I don't see anybody, I don't know, waiting for then. However
I can see when there's a new one appointed in the middle of a, you know, then you're gonna do that one.
Well, then let's just do it that way. Just have individual, the new people, which is probably gonna maybe just be one or two people, I don't know.
But
Um, by themselves. She's, she's the one that says she can do it by herself, but one at a time. And then if it's us for review, let's do ours as a group. The people that are existing board members. I don't know, that's just an idea. Next. Hey, are we, is this a part of our policy committee?
Oh.
I'm wondering if we're done with the policy committee part. And we're gonna adjourn that and now we're just kinda going over this orientation.
Yeah, let me, let me talk, let me talk to everybody about it. Let me talk to, you know, Kelly thinks, how long it would take and get her feedback and Jason, and I don't know, we'd want, you know.
It's more feedback. And I, I'm totally on board with individual meetings with the paratransit and mobility and all of that.
Department.
Because that's, because like you said, they might take five days to do all of them, or they might take five weeks depending on their work schedule if you've got somebody that's working.
Yeah. Or two, two, you know, go, go to, I, I, for sure it can see two. One in the morning and one in the afternoon. One session, you know, something like that, like ten o'clock and then the other one at
Yeah, well, I mean, within a couple of months of when they start, they've been sworn in, two months is fine.
Yeah.
They're gonna be absorbing a lot of stuff anyhow. It's not like it's critical that they get it done, you know, it might mean speed.
Right. But to go sit and dispatch and stuff, it'd be really educational, really educational, how, how
Oh, yeah.
What the pace is, how busy people are, what you're looking at, what they have to find out, you know.
You learn so much more. I was just, uh, in the dark
Yeah.
About operations for a long time.
The only way you can even get it is to go, is to go there.
Just go and watch it, so. Okay, so are we done then?
What did, what, we talked about strategic, um, plan, one of the, a really
Can we, okay, we're done.
In this meeting.
Okay. Because policies are done, that's all we have?
Yes.
Okay, any objection to, no?
Let's forge it. Yay. Mary? Yay for you.
Yay for me.
Yay for you.